Make the motion.
I'll second it, one favor.
Aye.
Aye. Plans. A motion for, for the plans.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, a favor.
Aye.
Aye, we're giving a novel to try to think reconciliation.
Yes. Not to read, but yes. Uh, I'll make the motion.
I'll second, one favor.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, need a motion to put the, that you on for the new commission.
Yeah. We said we did.
Yeah.
Apparently we do.
Yep.
All right.
And that's who they want.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
I'll second, one favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Department heads. Jason.
Warren, Jason.
Warren, Jason.
I've got a couple things for, uh,
this.
Um. We have our, yeah, right away contract that I need signatures for for our bridge two oh two in Stoneblow. This is just an end up contract that, uh, is part of the phase for this, this bridge, so I just need signatures from commissioners today. Um, we have an on call, we're, I believe supposed to be opening our
At two minutes.
Community crossings next day.
Yep.
Um, I do have an on call agreement with USI to do the inspection tape. Um, just the full responsibility start to finish for the project, we've done this for many years, so it's just not whole, it's, uh, in the amount of forty nine thousand dollars. This includes this year, and if you guys will look over it, we can, I can give you copies, but this year includes testing of material. Um, they have changed the binder formulas for asphalt, so, um, some testing will be done this year on our roads. For that, if you guys are okay with that, I'll, I'll sign it if you'd like to look over it, it's fine.
Yes.
Um, speaking of that, we have letters of interest for our new bridge inspection cycle, um, I've asked Jeff Fisher if he'd be interested in scoring the, the consultants again, if one of you two would like to, or both of you, we're be more, this is a package for one of you to, to look over if you'd like to.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll leave that here. Our bridge inspections, I, I received the memo from Federal Highway and Enda. The bridge inspection cycle for this year, our last inspection phase, um, is probably going to uh, raise the cost about fifteen thousand dollars due to some new inspection assignments they have to do, we have, we have money in our accounts for the house, I just want to give you guys a heads up. Cause it really led into what we thought we were going to.
Yeah.
And, uh, but this is coming from Federal Highway and their stage, so. Um, one last thing.
I was.
Uh, we met with Sam Sarah, they're like a fleet management group, um, GPS. We, we spoke with them a couple Fridays ago, I kind of informed KW about what was all in tail on that, and we had another meeting with them Friday, um. I spoke to a couple other counties that are using them, Montgomery County, Howard County, they've been very impressed with it. The information's right here, um, like I said, it's fleet management service. They, they do a whole bunch of stuff, um. If, if we were to go with them, uh, it's a plug and play option, just plug into the OBD. It takes idle time for fuel consumption and, uh, a lot of other things, um, up to the date, GPS locations and things like that, so here's some information for you guys, I'll get to you. Um, the cost would be for the first year, ninety eight hundred dollars. And then it's a three year contract. The next two years would be ninety four hundred dollars apiece. We do have money and, and equipment, one in eleven sixty nine in our roads that we were to do that, so we have plenty of money there to cover that, if you guys would like to, Ethan, there's some lawyer information if you'd like to look at some. So.
Standby, having technical difficulties with the recorder.
Yeah. It's good.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Right.
Carry on. We need to get our few things swathed, uh, keep going with the, making the work in, um. So that's working, um. We have been trying to do, I'll do some grading last week and today, and trying to get some material off the road, roads today before it rains, so perfect. So, inspections.
We'll review that stuff.
Yes, that's fine, um, whoever is going to, if I could have answers back by Thursday, if possible, for this.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But it was.
Carrie, down there.
Now, we'll take it back to Harry.
There.
Yes. What do you think?
I have anything this morning, so I was watching that construction along the way at the jail. But those are this.
Okay.
You guys got any information or?
I, I don't. Cool, all right, then we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew.
All right. So we talked about last month, the holiday schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Um, um, bringing numbers back to you on that for what it would cost for the sheriff's office. And, uh, so it would be four, four deputies at six extra days. So with the Medicare FICA included, it'd be three thousand eight hundred eighty eight dollars more. On the jail side, there would be nine jail officers. And with their fighting in Medicare, it'd be eight thousand seven hundred forty eight dollars extra a year.
I thought it was on. I thought it was on. The only one, but I'll see it. Well.
Nice.
That was this, not the George.
That is just traditional. Okay. No, you're not, no, you're fine, no, you're fine. I believe it's supposed to be, being talked about today, so, you know.
Okay, we know, I'll wait, I'll wait for the joint session.
Who else?
What else back there? He must know, yard back there.
Somebody's coming.
David, you can watch you guys though.
No, for you, thank you, Danny.
Okay.
Yeah, anybody else? We'll open these two bids. Get the turn of the floor for it. Uh, these, these crossroads for milestone. So, and the second one is from refrag for community crosses. Other than that, we have two bids. It's one way up to commit the piece to do electrical work in, remove this wall to get space, was larger. I would like to vote a month, decide if they get those paid tariff. It's all right, you even. We get seventy bid. It's always big today. Really?
And can we, one of you move to take those under advisement? Those big, yes.
Yes. Well.
I'll make a motion to give those to Jason and take under budget.
What are these?
Those are, those are bids to
There's two on each.
Basically, remove this wall behind us to open this room up, or to be moving Kim's office into the middle over here by the treasurer's office, and then so we can have
One construction ones were.
Were looking.
They don't, um, they don't read by contracts, so I guess your guys' issue not mine. It's been.
Uh, I would like move on these today, if you want me. Uh, we have two, but I guess. Yes, sir. The CCMG today's will be a little loud this morning.
So.
You want to read this? All right.
But the, um, the, um, how we read.
Um, I mean, we can handle it, I guess. Uh, usually just.
What down?
Yeah, yeah, I'll give that to him. No milestones bid, the price sheet is ten with the green.
Yeah.
Didn't use that for that, like, yeah.
It should be right towards, it's very close to that.
I'm sorry, I'm very dear.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, milestone bid is for, uh, one million nine hundred twenty eight thousand three hundred thirty eight dollars. When, one million nine hundred twenty eight thousand three hundred thirty eight. It's, it is total, their total would be one million nine hundred thirty seven thousand seventy three dollars and seventy five cents. Would, would you read? There's like three numbers in total, in a total? So, yeah, so, um, the eight hundred south from US forty one seven fifty, Sherwood Mill Road is, uh, one million four hundred twenty seven thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Uh, s- Get that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Schoolhouse Road from Wallace Towns to the bridge is four hundred and forty five thousand two hundred and fifty eight and seventy five cents. And the Schoolhouse Road from three forty one to the town limits of Wallace, sixty three thousand nine hundred and thirty five. That's the number I gave you.
Yes.
Hey. And you know your numbers, but, um, I'll just read them off too, uh, the, uh, eight hundred to forty one, Sherwood Mill Lake Road, one million four hundred thirty three thousand four hundred and twenty nine. Schoolhouse Road to the bridge is four hundred and forty four thousand four hundred and thirty four dollars and fifty cents. And the town limits is fifty thousand four hundred seventy four dollars and fifty cents. Back to them, yeah. Um, a slider.
You need yourself. Um, including, including to read out loud, who all did and.
But, so, two, um, testaments here from one from Slider, pre-service for, um, removing this wall, expanding this room to be open and moving Ken's off, Otter's office to the between treasurers and Otter's office. Um, that bid from Slider feeing in at, uh, twenty one thousand eight hundred dollars. My second bid is from Three Nails Construction, uh, to be the same work, twenty three thousand two hundred thirty five.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to prove Slider's bid at only one thousand eight hundred dollars for the construction, deconstruction and construction.
Yeah, I'll second that. All there, I second this bid, aye. And thanks for electric work, um, Ricketts Electric put in a bid for eight thousand. Uh, and United Electrical put in their bid at eight thousand three hundred seventy five.
Make a motion to reset Ricketts' bid of eight thousand.
Out for the electrical. I'll second that.
Aye.
Tina's own town, I might have to paint, their budget to the ship, it's out by the, I mean, nothing, okay, but they're wanting, uh, they're wanting water out there, which the well is already there, it's kind of drill line over to the ship. That fifty two eighty five for that bid.
True.
Yeah. Yes.
We change it. Can we open that, Mark?
Mark. And you want painting, who's going to use the, uh, well, since we're above the well.
See now, like this, this, you order that this is just, that's just painting, nothing through the well.
Yeah, I don't have anything, yeah. You don't have anything through the well.
I, that's all she gave me.
All right, they've got the money.
Next one, yeah.
They'll get the money and that, but it, it happened.
Everybody's in this, I'm, yeah, make a motion.
I'm making a motion to let them use their money out of their budget to do that.
I'll say that.
That's exactly, best we can please. There.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Yeah. No, a little water on. Yeah, this is now a scene.
Ask this after the council.
Yeah. And she's, and she's not here, so. But. Yeah, that question. Just want to. Just a law. That's all right, too.
Yeah.
If that's all. All right. Ethan, is there any comment where we roll into the meeting here? All right, different suit, oh, suit, yeah.
I've heard there's more vacancies on the APC board.
There is.
Are you going to advertise it back?
Yes, I believe that is the plan, we've had discussions all weekend because, um, four people have resigned. Um, with no, I haven't heard any reasons why, just resignation, email statement, so, um, yes, that is our plan, is to let people know that these positions are open to social.
With and we, we can do, we have to do a formal, formal advertisement, but there will be three open seats, three open positions, citizen filled positions, and one open position that has to be filled by the extension office.
Yeah.
So.
And two of the open ones.
Two of the
Be party affiliate, two of them have to be Democrats, and one, one is a Republicans, so. Sorry, my slur.
So I go to the on the website?
Well, it's a good question. Um, we'll try and get it on, I would, proper Brad, to get it, I'll make sure it is on that, yes, so.
I hear the word transparency is spoken a lot of times at these meetings. Why, why on your website, no public hearings are being advertised?
Um, I thought the APC, which one are you, I mean, I thought, I thought they were all on my website, but as far as.
That last public hearing, the only way you could find out about it on the website was to go through the agenda.
The APC.
Right.
Yeah.
And that usually doesn't hit the website until about the day before the meeting.
Yeah.
So.
It was a, uh, an advertised public meeting, correct? I would, they, they, they talked, they had talked about that it had to be publicized prior to that meeting.
Yes.
Where does that get publicized?
It's it should be, it should be published in the, in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Newspapers, so.
Ten. Sue, I'm trying, we've had this conversation multiple times in-house here, I'm trying to figure out how to get a Facebook page set up to where every one of these meetings, cause I don't know how to reach everyone else without a Facebook page. Unfortunately, this is not the necessary, let it is, um. Where the county will have a Facebook page to put all these things on, including Tina's, like EMA, all that stuff, uh, we're talking about, uh, we already have a texting service for, you can sign up now, but like meetings, if you want to sign up, we're trying to kind of incorporate that in, so, you know, you'll get these notifications that, hey, this meeting is coming up this week, um.
I, I wondered why the, uh, phone calls are put, starting the first year to notify us about the meetings. I got mine.
We got hers.
I have receiving one, you're like.
Okay.
I've not been getting one either.
And that was, that was coming that was coming through the thirteen, you know, has, uh, she has, so, but.
I couldn't get.
Sue, I will ask her specifically.
Well, it's just that I used to work for Glass Card Equipment, sent out with their webpage. And it was so easy just to pull the bulletin up on the very homepage, you know? We'd have a special going on, whatever, I just don't understand why your website, you can't just put bulletin on, you know, public hearings.
So, one thing that I've brought up to me a while back was this, the city of Attica has an app that you can download, I have it on my phone for reference, and it has everything on it that they're, that the city of Attica is doing, meeting agendas, um, for proper forms, you need to fill out to turn to the city building, um, that's something we could open discussion to see if we wanted to do a count, it, it's a service, it costs money, but we could, I, I'd be more than open to getting a county app that anybody as citizens can download, and then all the information is on there, when down, down the road, if we get ordinance is written, you know, building permit, stuff done, they would all be there, and you could easily find them in one place instead of having to dive through the county's website, which I will admit is quite cumbersome to find information at times, but I mean, if that's, if that's something the citizens, you know, myself would like to see, I mean, that's definitely something I would like to look into.
Because not everybody knows that.
Correct. I would prefer not to most of the time, but myself.
I have not, I haven't yet mentioned.
But that, that isn't, that is an avenue to relate, you know, to push transparency out there, we could, we could get, we could look into getting the website designed for the county. Like I said, it, it is an expense, it would cost a little bit of money, but rather spend a little money and keep everybody in the know than keep everybody in the, potentially people be in the dark.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
May I make that comment?
Yes, sir.
This seems like an opportunity for me to get Sue back on that board where she should have been in the first place, Erin, you made this comment, we're going a different direction was the reason that she wasn't put on there, or she was taken off in the first place. We need people with experience like her, not just like-minded people. So in all fairness, Ruth.
Couple questions back here, so how would that go into affect the meeting on the twenty seventh of March, because there was something that I have a client that there was some reason.
We need three, right? Back, um.
How many's on the board, I thought it was seven, I thought we needed four.
Eight. Technically eight on the board.
Thank you. I thought we need four as well, and we have one.
Eight.
I'll look into it, I mean, if, we might have to get some up before then.
Well, I think the, the plan is to have those seats filled.
Plan is to have those seats filled, not rush in filling the seats, but to have the seats filled before the March twenty seventh meeting and filled in a time to where they can get up to speed on what's what's going on, I mean, there's, there's a lot working in the APC, and there's a, there's a lot that needs to be focused, myself being the commissioner seat on the APC, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be focused elsewhere and, and done.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
As of the discrepancy between the Petersburg Fringe and it being a county, so he's already went over and, I mean, you have builders that are waiting, and he's got, he can't do permits until, or the driveway in there, he can get started on that, so he knows for sure that it's going to be you know, because I don't, we're preparing it however it needs to be done.
Very nice.
But you, you're pretty confident, I'll
Yes.
Fill up the place on
Yes. I've got all the names. Yes.
It's going to be a BCA issue instead of the APC.
It could be, cause she said one of the last semicresis variants, right? Which is the BCA.
Because it started out with the Petersburg variance, and then you found out right before we were doing, we had to actually get that session as an accounting on Petersburg, so this is what we were told we had to do for, for him. Those kinds of, to that. And now.
If it's a variance request, and I don't know anything about it, but I will say very confidently with a three week window, I'll be able to figure it out.
Okay.
Yes.
Ethan, I think that was a reasonable request, because the gentleman would like to vote with the hands and then add the street.
Okay.
Will have to be reasonable to like commercial or business.
And that's already in, that request is already in, it's just waiting for the APC to meet.
I believe so.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. No, that, that is, that is, to have everything in place before the 27th meeting.
Thanks.
Yes. Any other public comment? Thank you all.
Well, I made a comment on the last meeting, and I was asked to bring it here and make sure it's addressed to the commissioners. So we had an issue with subdivision and Beatersburg county ordinance and some of those things. And during some of those meetings and discussions and things that have happened, it's been an eye-opener to us that it appears that the resoning administrator for the county is also working for the developer. And that's just something that seems to be a conflict of interest. And so as we learned of that, we just wanted to raise that to the commissioners and make sure that commissioners understand that relationship.
Yes.
So that's my comment, and that's what I was asked to bring here. So I'm just wanting to make sure that that issue was raised and, and you're aware of that, and if it needs to be researched, some attention.
Yes, that is, that is something that I can speak for both of us that we, we will be looking into.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Let's still run it in the joint meeting.
You can go ahead and close it.
Okay.
It's fine. There's not going to be any business that commissioners have to do during the joint session, right?
We'll open another meeting.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead and close it down, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Next meeting will be the 17th at 6:00 PM.
I will sign. Oh, okay.
Yes, this is the same.
What do you mean?
Thank you.
It's same once as doing for the challenge.
Yeah.
I think so. I show you.
She's going to send to you. Who's sitting here? That's Jeff.
I have two. I never really know about, I'm kind of alert to sign up. This is going to be a same. Webpages. You know, we got a bunch of. Yes. How are you, sir? I just, you know. I was doing what I thought come to land. I'm sorry. I don't have news, I know. That could be funnest thing. It is. It's real hard going to state lines. We have. On state line. He's a. Our light goes. We're not. I'm taking now they. Seven. Here. And that's. Didn't even give us time to get back. That was before they were researching. That was last time. Before they were. Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it.
Yes, no, thank you.
The old, the old man.
I'm going to give you one of those.
Yes.
Nobody puts me in there.
Yeah, very good. You guys do what you need.
To Isla area.
Good morning, everyone.
Measures.
I called the meeting to order for the sound county council. Do you have any department that's available?
Hi, Dana. I just want you guys to know that I've been planning this such ago. I will have two dispatches that have overtime on their checks as well. I have, I have that one that says over her 84 hours, one worked 112, one worked 111, and one worked 110. So just make sure you're all. I will have her, already have her replaced. So one of my public timers switched into a full-time position, and she started on Wednesday as a full-time position nights, so we're doing Wednesday part. All right, and you guys have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else out here? I don't like to say either.
I don't, I don't need any.
On the 911 council, there is a printout that Dana gave me in regards to a part-time position. It was inadvertently left off of her budget last year. And so she gave us a breakdown on what she's anticipating for that position. So take a look at that, and then it will be put on instead of him for our meeting. So you guys are aware too. You guys have any questions, you can email me, and I know this doesn't matter to me. Thank you. Hearing no more conversations from any other department heads, would we like to move forward with the DAV construction?
Andrew wants.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew. Hold that thought.
So the holiday, yeah, we spoke about last month. And I, we had gotten some figures together. And that was the auditor, and got from the MSC dispatched their numbers also. So for, for my department, the nine jailers at six holidays is, it's 8100 plus 8% for FICA, Medicare's, the rough estimate of that. That was going to be. For the jail side, it's 8,748. And for the roadside deputies, it's 3,888. And it looks here by this paper that the auditor came to me that for all departments to be eligible to have all 15 holidays, be approximately $22,925 for all departments to go to this. That's with FICA and retirement included.
Council, do you have any discussion? I personally would like to know who all gets paid for holiday pay in the county.
Well, I mean, I guess you'd consider, everybody does. Because for those who get the day off at the courthouse, they're still getting paid full pay. So, and they get the day off.
Right.
For us, we've worked it at just normal pay because we have to work that day. And for the nine holidays I've forgiven, we were, we were given $150 extra to work those days, so. I'm sure all of the emergency services would love to have a day off. But that's. We can't do that, so. And we've already recognized nine of the holidays. I'm, I'm not not sure why we're not recognizing all of them that the commissioner set forth for the whole county.
So you're currently getting paid for nine holidays. This would be an additional six holidays.
Yes.
So all nine holidays are reflected in this breakdown? Okay.
No.
No.
The night, this is in addition.
Okay.
So this would be in addition to what we already allotted to our budgets.
Session, questions?
Well, I'm torn because I think Andrew's worked his butt off for the entire department, you know, to get him up to a decent pay the past, last few years. But on the flip side, when we look at our budget, you know, that pay has increased considerably the last couple of years. And with everything else we're looking at, it's pretty tough to, to add more. I think it's hard to compare certain employees to other employees, because there are different benefits that some receive that others don't, you know. You know, I, I appreciate the work Andrew's done. I mean, he's looking out for his department, which is what we, we should, is pretty impressive, but what kind of.
I'll speak on that. The board of department is, we've housed out-of-county inmates also since we built this new facility, and we brought in quite a bit of money compared to what we were paying out before when we were in the old facility. And we continue to bring in money. You know, every year, the, the DOC gives us approximately $27,000 a year to house their inmates for short times on the level sixes. And misdemeanor money that's brought in. So with those two, it's roughly $27,000 a year. Plus whatever we're making still off of Sol or Vigo County, as we're still housing some of their inmates currently. So I'm not sure what those numbers are for this year, because I haven't, haven't got that data list on that. But I do know that we're still getting paid from them, so I would say to offset this, can we not pay from that money and put into a whole thing? Because it goes back to general fund, I believe, the out-of-county housing.
It does, but we also got to look at the increase of employees that we had to because of the larger size of the jails. So I mean, you can't just consider how much we're getting for housing out-of-county prisoners without taking how much we're spending on extra salaries or extra staff, which we're not. I know we can always count on this, but we haven't exactly used all that money either. Apparently we gave back $157,000 to the fund 2024 that we did use. Right, so we're, we're looking at that also being. Yeah, I would like to see more information on what extra.
Right, I know this is the second time you brought it to the council. I think we need just a, a moment to discuss it, look at what we're, what the numbers look like for, for this, and then touch back on it and see if that's the way to handle it. Is everyone in favor of that?
One more thing is the longevity for Bob Kemp. And I went back to the February meeting and watched it. And Dudley and Tom Boo both discussed this before the motion came about, and part of this is on me because I didn't catch it in the motion that Denise made about Bob Kemp and his longevity pay, because he's been here right at 30 years, 29 or 30 years. And for all other county employees, they get longevity, and they get it 25 years plus, gets the $2,000 every year. We have elected as deputies that have not been here that long to take it every other year, which equals out the end. But Bob Kemp, he should get it every year because he would have gotten it every year on the old longevity. And we discussed that prior to the motion getting brought up, and I didn't catch. The fact that Bob, Bob's longevity wasn't in that motion. So that's partially on me, but it was discussed just a few minutes before the motion by Tom Boo. Saying, do you? I want you all to know how Bob Kemp's going to get treated on this deal. Being what Dudley had brought up, the hey, Bob Kemp's been here over twenty-five years, so he. He should get this longevity every year.
You know, I think a few of us went back and watched that. Three and a half hour.
Yeah.
Video. To find out that it was in the last five minutes of the meeting. Um, and we, we have. Discussed it or talked about it amongst a couple of us and. I think we wanted to go back and look at the budget hearing from September fourteenth. I have not personally had the opportunity to do that yet. Um, because Dudley and I went back in the minutes book. And found out what day. That was done, so give us a chance to look at that meeting on September fourteenth or the twelfth, it was one of the two, I can't remember exactly the date. Now I'm leaning towards the twelve.
But that didn't rebound him up in the budget at least over fourteen hundred dollars?
Well, I got.
No, 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 him himself, yeah, him himself.
All the deputies got five percent.
But he got, he got some extra.
No.
Yeah, I think so. I, I live back.
February, February.
Yeah, we were capped at fifteen percent.
I don't want to argue with you, but I, that's how I calculate it, is that's. And you, and you were sitting there and we said that. And, I mean, you can look back at them. I will too, but I.
Fifteen. And that's what, so that's where it was capped at at the time.
Because when we looked at to bring everybody in line where they should be, we changed the, the re- retirement, I believe, to thirty-two years. From twenty.
Four.
Six or something like that, or yes. And then we had a fifteen percent cap, so when we brought everybody in line, we didn't go over a fifteen percent cap. And then it was longevity every other year, that's the way I interpreted the meeting. And uh, so Dudley and I pulled the minutes book and we found that we discussed in the budget, the sheriff's budget was on, I believe, September twelfth or fourteenth, the video, so. I would like to have an opportunity to go back and look at that video. And when we uh, have our next meeting, um, we can bring that up and discuss that and come to a solution.
Was it the fourteenth?
Was it the fourteenth?
It wasn't because that's just that.
Okay, so it could have been the twelve.
We can look in the book in there, but there, there's no. Detailed minutes on budget hearings, so that's what we gotta watch.
We should have watched the video to get the actual conversation. And I'd like to have an opportunity to do that, so I don't. Misinterpret anything to you and, and to the rest of the guys, so, I guess.
Well, as long as, I mean. We got our pay to where it is. Because of losing officers, that is the main thing and trying to be somewhat competitive.
Right, because we all.
Longevity thing is often years of service and, and truly to go. To go the right way about longevity, it should go off of each individual officer's years of service, not just every other year. Because I could have a kid start now and in January he gets a. He gets longevity raised, he's like been there six months or whatever, you know.
Right.
It's not fair to the guys that have been there two or four or six years, whatever, whatever it was that. We had originally talked about, so.
And whatever we decide to do, I want it to be meticulously documented so that we are all on the same page.
I agree with that.
Longevity is the minimum, so if they're going to start twelve, five years or. So we've got somebody new, they don't get gen longevity.
Well, that was only, okay, that's, that's where we definitely have to sit down and discuss this because. That was on the old longevity as far as we got, we elected to go on this. I don't want to call it a matrix because we discussed that and it's not necessarily a matrix, it was base pay and then getting. The individual officers where they need to be as far as years of service off that longevity list, so. When we elected to do that. That meant every two years of service you get two thousand dollars. Instead of the seven fifty and the thousand and twelve fifty and whatever three years, every year. Yeah, we, we probably need to sit down and discuss this.
Yes, I think so too, get it on your down.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day. Any other department heads before we continue on? Last call. Okay, we're going to be forward now with BW Construction. They're here to explain the different delivery method, methods. For the construction contracts and I believe this is for the highway building or anything in general.
Yep.
Or anything. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. My name is Adam Calle, I'm the business development team for BW Construction. We have a couple of other colleagues out in the audience. Uh, Jonathan Gregg, um, and then we have our president of, a partner and president of construction, Dustin Frye here. Uh, we, we just thought that, uh, just like you said, uh, Madam Council President, that. Um, it would be beneficial, um, for whether that's a upcoming project or a project, uh, down the road. That with new members of commissioners, new members of council, that it would be beneficial to describe to you guys. The different delivery methods that are available to you when looking at a project, and so we believe that's. We put together a nice little presentation here to show you some key points of different delivery methods. That you may uh, decide to do down the road uh, with any upcoming projects, so. Uh, Dustin has extreme experience with multiple, multiple counties and cities, uh, so. A, um, a lot of experience to see what has gone well and uh, and with some projects that he will highlight in his presentation, so. Uh, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dustin Frye, but I think, um, I, I think we just really appreciate the opportunity of reaching out to Commissioner Pruitts. Um, to, uh, to, to be able to present to you guys, uh, and show you these different delivery methods as this should be pretty educational for you guys, so. Uh, thank you again for letting us present and I'm going to turn it over to Dustin.
Thanks, Adam. I, uh, again Dustin Frye with Build BW. With the three owners and president of construction. Um, and again, just going to echo Adam's thanks of the opportunity to come in and speak with you all and introduce who we are and, and hopefully. Maybe provide a little bit of insight and education about what options are available to government bodies when it comes to construction procurement. Uh, contracts, so um. Little history. Uh, BW Construction's been in business for eight years. Um, I've been doing construction for twenty years since I graduated from Purdue. And uh, came over and started BW Construction with my two partners Bradley and Roy about eight years ago. Um, with a, with a focus mainly on municipal, um, instruction. And uh, really with trying to do things differently. My partners at the time owned an architecture and engineering firm, doing a lot of municipal public work. Um, we worked for a large company, uh, the western part of the state. And uh, doing a lot of general contracting and construction management. And uh, felt like the industry was just, um, becoming a lot of finger pointing, lack of transparency. Um, different things, and so we, we came together to try to do things differently, hopefully being able to offer. A holistic style of services at the time. And, and be better partners to the communities we work in, um, and so that's what we've done, and so. Highlighting just a little bit about kind of the reason we have our business, our core values, integrity, open communication. Putting others first, um, being solution oriented. Uh, you know, you don't find out, our teams come in much and pointing fingers and blaming, we try to bring a solution even if it's not. It's our fault, um, team spirit and gratitude, um, are at the core of our business. Um, Build BW, the brand three companies, um, so we have BW Construction. We build things, uh, we have BW Development, um, so we have real estate development, we own. Our own properties and assets and develop those in communities, we also, um, serve as a developer. On build operate transfer projects, which I'll get more of the E M T uh, later in the presentation. And then we also have a company called TVD Properties where we'll do brokerage, um, property management, real estate, um, as well, so. Speaking of BW Construction, just some of the types of projects that we've done. Um, police stations, fire stations, highway garages, nine-one-one dispatch facilities, E M A. Uh, we've done quite a few, um. Jails, uh, we're doing a county mental health facility right now. Water utility buildings. You, you name it in terms of a public type of project that's needed outside of wastewater or horizontal. Uh, infrastructure, bridges and rims, probably die, so, um. A little bit about that. You could look at the eyes there, if you maybe not, so. Um, so to the B of it, delivery methods, um, realistically speaking. Uh, when there's a public project, um, that you're considering, there's, there's five options that, uh, that you have. At your fingertips. The try the true, the original, um, design bid build. Construction manager as agent or advisor, C M A, often referred to. Construction manager as constructor or construction manager at risk, C M C. Another one, there's a design bill and then build operate transfer. Um, so. I'll give you some highlights of all of the, the ones, if you feel any questions. Feel free to stop me anytime, happy to get over anything in more detail. So design bid build. Pretty much what it is, you guys. Get a designer on board, hire the designer, the architect engineer. They put together a design, it goes out to bid through public nervous. Bidders turn in their pricing and you rip and read bids and you award to the lowest in that. Contract. Uh, very straightforward. I think I heard in the commissioner's meeting this morning, you're reading bids or accepting bids probably through some sort of design bid build. Couple of things to note, totally separate design and construction contracts, so. The commissioners are holding those contracts, there's two separate contracts. There's zero input from contractors during the design process. We all trust that architects are doing. Their job and know everything about a project. Um, we also know that every construction project or engineering project has issues at some point. Um, it is a competitive bid. But with that, there's typically a higher risk of cost overruns and change orders, so. Being on council, you're probably well aware of projects that have been done where. Bid day, you hear a price and then months later they're coming back for change orders. Um, that's just, that's just of it, um, contractors are typically incentivized to go find mistakes in the design. Say, hey, that was not what was intended bid, here's our change order, um, so. Design bid build, hard bid, um, all, all that reference. Uh, construction managers, agent, C M A, so this is a professional service that, um, governing body has the right to hire. A C M as a professional service, there's not a required. Um, procurement of that, much like you can hire any designer, architect or engineer professional, you can do the same with the C M A. And they work on behalf of the owner to facilitate the design bid building process, so you can bring them on early. They can coordinate with the designer, hopefully through that or. Sniffing out the issues that may be happening in the design, getting that early input, planning. Um, they then will many times break down big packages, um, that then get publicly bid under the previous statute. Ultimately, all of those contracts, however many that get broken down from a big package. Um, are all held by the governing body, so in this case probably commissioners and. Um, commissioners still bear all the risk. You just have somebody in your corner as a C M, as the expert that's coordinating all of that work. Trying to make sure, um, it's done completely minimizing that risk. Um, there is no risk transfer in this. But it does give you someone on your side to help with that. Sometimes there's a lot, the, the popular thing these days is to spin off the C M A. You might have heard of this, owner's technical rep, you're hired a owner's rep to come in. Um, very similar, owner's reps not having any risk, they're advising the owner on what, what they should, shouldn't do. Um, trying to provide value, the, the real difference between those two is, is in how they typically get paid. Um, so. Any questions so far? Uh, for everyone here, C M C, construction manager, constructor, construction manager at risk, all different things that have been. Spoken about, this is Indiana code five thirty-two. It is a process in which an owner will go through an R F Q, R F P. Process to select a C M S constructor. Um, that. The R F P process has a few criteria, one of which is defining, the C M has to define how they will. Um, what fees they will charge you, is there a pre-construction fee? Is it, what is their cost basis fee and, um, potentially general conditions? Um, they're hired early on, typically right alongside the designer. Those entities work together under two separate contracts, um, to culminate in what we call a G M P. Uh, which may be something you've heard before, but G M P stands for guaranteed maximum price. Is negotiator along the way when that G M P will take place. Uh, most people would say this gives far along in design and get you a G M P when we know as much information as possible. Um, it's good for all parties. Couple of key elements of the G M P on this that'll defer from, uh, the next one we talk about. After a G M P is established here or before, depending on, there's still a competitive public bidding process, so. The C M can pre-qualify subcontractors. And have a process to pre-qualify, so you can get, you can rule certain people out if they're not qualified, but then. It's publicly bid, just like go back to the design bid build, open the bids. The C M compiles them, they formulate their G M P or they've done a G M P before it's bid, that's a, that's part of the negotiation. Um, C M holds all those contracts. There's a double layer of bonds on a project for performance and payment, so all of the prime contracts that are bid out have to have a bond. And the C M has to have a bond, so you're really double bonded. Which is, is another layer of protection, but it's also another layer of cost in the project. And then they proceed with the construction, so. As a governing body, you do have a risk transfer, so you're putting the risk on the C M, they have a G M P, they have to deliver set scope, set price, if it goes over that, it's on them. But there's those elements of, of public bidding and other things. Design bill, this is, this became very popular probably fifteen years ago. Well, fifteen years ago, a lot of K twelve schools did this design bill, the statute, um. Then it became, higher ed started to use it. It's not really used as much today from a public procurement perspective. Um, with B O T now being available, which other than to still get those design bill qualities, this process is extremely cumbersome. Um, speaking from experience, I've done four or five design build. Speaking from experience, I've done four or five design build, public design build projects. Uh, there's an R F Q that I have to go out first and narrow the two or three selected qualified parties that can then propose on it. Then there's an R F P. Prior to doing the R F P, public entity has to create design criteria. So typically you're hiring the design criteria developer, which is an architect to lay out what you want. And then you also have to get a technical review committee that's appointed by the governing body, uh, which consists of one member from the governing body and then two of the following, three, an architect, engineer, qualified contractor. And you have qualitative data and quantitative, it's extremely cumbersome. And yes, you do get risk transfer at the end of the day, but you also aren't guaranteed what you're getting. Um, so you have criteria that was developed by somebody you hired. And you have teams going to compete to say, hey, this is how we can best do this criteria for the best value. You go score those designs, you open their price, get a price per point. If I haven't lost you by now, it's, it's a cumbersome process. You lose a lot of control and speaking from experience of some projects that, that are out there that I've been a part of, that at the end of the day, the client wasn't extremely satisfied with what they got. It met the criteria, you won the project, but is that really in the best interest of everybody? So they tried that for a while and then they'll operate transfers come along really over the last five to seven years, this has become the go-to delivery method when it comes to public procurement. For just about any project. Build operate transfer was created many years ago by the city of Indianapolis to do the R C A. And so it's now, it's been, it's been there, but first step in doing B O T is that the county, the governing body that wants to do a B O T have to adopt a resolution to use to do a B O T. Uh, this is Indiana code five twenty three. It's a very scripted R F P process. The intent of the process is for the entity to select based on qualifications or any other criteria you want to put in it. A developer. It's called a developer in the statute. That gets other connotations that you can, the developers financing the deal and stuff. Yes, there are alternative financing mechanisms within a B O T that the council would have at their fingertips. That's not necessarily required. You can do it to just pick your team. And then you can bond your project as well. So R F P process, you select your team, that developer formulates their whole team. So they have them as the C M or a separate C M. They have all of their architects and engineers. You see all of that. You pick the, the people you want to work with. Then you enter into a scoping agreement of which everybody's sitting at the same table defining the scope of the project. You get all the input from governing body, the user groups, whatever it may be. And create the project through the scoping phase. Scoping phase culminates in a guaranteed maximum price. This, this much like C M C has the risk transfer. So at the end of the day, a hundred percent of this gets passed on to the development team. And then when they sign that final B O T agreement after the scoping period is their obligation to deliver all of that scope, whatever price was satisfied, when it was stated it would be done. It is bonded with performance and payment bond. There are no opportunities for change orders. Unless somebody from the client side comes over and says, hey, build this highway garage, we would like to add another bay. That's a change order. But anything within the general scope that was defined, they have to deliver it. So you don't change anything. Zero change orders. Very flexible. There's opportunity to hire an architect outside of it, bring other people in. Not always recommended. It's nice to get your whole team picked, but transparency, this is where we differ from a lot of others. So when we do our B O Ts, we are a hundred percent open book. So we will tell you what we're gonna, what our fee is. We'll tell you our staffing. We will show you all of the details. There is not a public bidding rip and read requirement to the B O T. Once you get through the R F P, all of your public obligation is done. And because of that, we feel we need to be extra transparent. It's not how everybody that does B O T does it. We're different. We will show you everything. We will sit down and go over our pitch and see, it'll be part of that selection process because we feel like we need to be transparent to have that trust to know we're getting the best value. We, we had a project recently that we had a team. One of the team members wasn't as transparent, ultimately the contract. There was some terminology in the contract from the county that, hey, we need to do more to show us the transparency. We were willing to do it. The other team member wasn't. We moved forward and we moved forward and got transparent. There was money in the project that came back to the county because of somebody else not showing that. So shared savings. The bot developer will have contingency. Again, all the more reason to be transparent. There's risks they're taking. There's things that happen in projects. So we're going to be transparent. At the end of the day, when that money is used or unused, whatever's left, that gets put back into to the orange pocket. So in terms of saving, so those last few principles, the shared savings, the transparency, seeing everything, that's not a statutory requirement. That's just how B W tries to do it. So want to make that clear. But very successful delivery method. You get a lot of opportunity to pick the team you really want leading your project. It, it helps drive home local too. There's local subcontractors and other things. You can really give them a better opportunity to jump in on the project. If for some reason Joe Schmo roofing has done six projects at the county and they are horrible and all your roofs leak and you don't want to use them. This delivery method also allows you to preclude them because you don't have to go with that process. So big fan of this. Plenty of counties, cities using this. There's, you want to speak to commissioners or others.
Want to touch on a, touch on a couple of examples you're doing now as
Yeah, so we just finished Carroll County Jail, we're B O T. We're currently doing Hamilton County's largest B O T project they've done, which is the Public Safety Center, which is emergency management and dispatch. That is a B O T project. Fire station for the Marion. We did Clay County's jail under B O T. Miami County Highway Garage, it's what we did a long time ago. Yeah.
Dustin, if I may, yes, back to the B W philosophy on this, if we can get specific for a second. Back when he was talking about the multiple entities of the construction side, the developer side, that's key here because some companies will set up a special purpose entity just for this project, right? But then as the county, you, you want the no security on the backend that if something happens to go south here, that the developer actually has real assets behind that developer name, right? And so that's B W's approach is we have a development company. They develop, they own stuff, they own big assets, that stuff all backs up your project. So you guys can have security in knowing that your development is a real developer. I just thought that'd be key to know.
Any, any questions? Anything, delivery method, all this B W instructions, design in general, happy to answer any question. Page, I don't remember, my email's on there. Think of anything, if you have a project you're considering and you just want to bounce ideas. Happy to be your resource.
So I have a question.
Yes.
We currently have a plan for our highway department and actual
Design.
Design. Would you take that design and tweak it or would you want to design something on your
If you have a design that, that you like, that the user groups are happy with.
Take a look at it.
Take a look at it. I wouldn't. I'm not gonna try to change something that you say is what you want to build.
Well, we've already paid for something.
So could you put that in B O T and say, hey, here's our design and procure it that way? Yes, you could. And then there wouldn't need to be a designer on the team other than to fulfill whatever obligation
Right.
that that architect still would require. There are still some requirements after the design's done.
Same way with the construction manager. That does a construction and
C M C?
Yeah.
Yep.
Same thing.
Same thing.
Okay.
You can do C M A, whoop. Help me understand the scale of project in terms of size or budget. Sometimes that dictates.
Yes.
Well, I remember I was supposed to share with you guys today, so I've got some numbers.
Okay.
The, uh, the storage building is eighteen thousand four hundred square feet. Uh, the fuel canopy is nine hundred square feet. The main building is eighteen thousand square feet in addition to all the finished areas, which is the office area. Uh, for the storage building, the estimated cost is one point seven million. The fuel canopy is ninety thousand. The main building, which is eighteen thousand square feet, that is the garage area with the base is one million nine hundred fifty thousand. The office area, which is all the finished area with beauty, cooling and the finishings is one million four hundred eighty thousand. The engineering estimate on that is eighty thousand. The architectural estimate is two hundred thousand. And the earthworks around it for drainage, parking lots and all the other work is one million one hundred thousand. That gives you a total of six million six hundred thousand for that project. With an asterisk that some of those buildings are large enough that they will require sprinkler system, which we have designed by a sprinkler system company. So you can probably add another two hundred fifty thousand to that. So you're looking at about six point eight million dollar project. By the time you add your contingency and, and bond costs and all that, you're probably looking about six million dollar project.
Brad, how many square feet is this building you're doing down here?
Twelve thousand.
And it's under a million, right?
Yeah.
Robert, that doesn't count salt barn either, right? Which is not a three hundred something.
Correct. Yeah, we excluded this whole one because I've already had a design and a cost that was separate. You're absolutely right.
Okay, it's Jason back there. All right, we might have to just put you in the closet.
Thank you.
I've been working many years.
Bert, your estimates come from Roger.
I'm at Woodland Instructor, uh, he's out of Boone County. He's New Course Field. And I sat with him and went through what Jason had provided for square footage.
Okay.
And those are just estimates because I needed to get you guys' numbers. You can work around.
So Jason, we talked about this when I came to the highway garage. It may be a process where we do this in phases. We get you, your main, the main building, fuel island.
That's perfectly, that's storage.
Storage is eighteen thousand four hundred square feet.
So the storage is bigger than the main building. Exactly.
No, the main building is bigger because only the garage part of the main building is eighteen thousand square feet. And then you have the office area, which is kind of funky looking. So I didn't have an exact square footage on that. We can, we can develop that.
And the office area would consist of Jason.
All, all the offices, the meeting rooms, shower rooms, bathrooms.
Kitchenette.
Mess hall, kitchenette, yeah. Um, also, uh, document room. It's all air conditioned heated. It's just like, like here.
Right.
That's finished.
The major undertaking.
If I could ask for one specific thing to solve on. There was a lot of material every year. So if that could be
Priority.
Yes.
If you could lay them out in one, two, three, four, five, you might have to be number one.
I remember that being your two.
Number two. On the upper end.
Yeah.
Well, fellas, thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
We appreciate the information and the presentation. It's a lot to think about moving forward.
Well, thanks for the, about the new members. I mean, I also be informative to share everybody the different methods that are available.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate it. We have any further questions? We'll read them out. I'm sure we will.
We just finished the highway maintenance building for City of Delphi.
Okay.
Twenty five thousand square feet, or just a little over two point five. There.
Twenty five thousand square feet.
And the number five, over two point five.
That included the building and office at like in storage and garage.
It's like eight bays and then the center of it, because they had two different compartments, the center was kind of office that could be breaker and shared for no. Based on the numbers he gave, if I, if you said, hey, I've got about thirty six thousand square feet of mixed stuff, the seven point two number is about right. It started to, to in our most square. But there's tons of opportunity to start looking at big blocks like that.
Right.
To save money.
Right.
So happy to sit down and look at anything with anybody.
Okay.
Try, try to add value.
That's right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.
Yes. For the counseling services, if we are gonna do this, if you guys can start to do this instead, I would recommend that we do the civil work, which is the drainage and the roads and the parking first to lay out for that. We need to get that on the place, especially with the reaching of salts. We need to capture all that before it runs down toward the waterway. So that's probably when you talk about phases, maybe we do at least the drainage phase. And then we can go into the salt barn and fill these mountains and so on.
Right.
Just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, we don't want to do get out of step.
I haven't done with the, I mean, we're lucky. I know Jason's talking about salt leaching. We need that salt barn really bad.
Yes.
Basically, when it runs on salt bars, well, I mean, it'll pay for itself.
What we did on the, we we were working at about seven years over third. And we're, we're losing probably thirty to thirty five percent of our salt just bleaching out. So now they all
Well, what we save by building a barn, pay itself off in seven years, we ultimately have our salt in. So to me, that's a no brainer. We're gonna do four, that's no brainer. Salt story out of forty one direction was worth.
You know, the advantage of having a storage facility is you buy that product out of season when it's a little cheaper, I would think. Don't be wrong about that.
The state sets a a bid for or bill and one, and that's what we know. I'm gonna set price.
Okay.
And we, so you're allowed up to a hundred and twenty percent of your amount of quantity. So you can do, we usually get our eighty percent that we have to buy minimum first. And then like this year, we ordered our other twenty percent or just about a week ago. So we still have another twenty percent every one.
All right, thank you. Only more with the Wabash River Greenway project, five crossing spark. Only more with the Wabash River Greenway project, five crossing spark. We got a situation. For those that don't realize this, because we didn't know it until we did a little investigation after our last meeting. We found out we don't own that park. That park is under a ninety-nine year lease with the Fountain County Park Board, which we're not even sure that's even in existence anymore. That was in nineteen ninety-three, the nineteen ninety-four, the Fountain County Park Board signed an agreement with the Fountain County Commissioners for a twenty-year lease. In four-year increments, that was never renewed after the first period. So in my opinion, we don't have a contract. The Commissioners do not with the Fountain County Park Board, and. I'm not sure we do anyway, because we don't know that that park board is in existence, we reached out to. A couple of people, I know Dudley talked to someone, would you like to elaborate?
Uh, I talked to Zach Thomas, he was the last president of the park board. Uh, I have not been able to get ahold of Nancy Wagner, she was secretary, said she would have all the minutes of. Who all was appointed and when, he said it originally began. Um, before that, uh, Steve Coffing was on there, got a ninety thousand dollar grant. Put in asphalt. Walkway down there, and Zach said, I can show you where it's at, it gets covered every year with six inches of silt. And I can dig down, show you exactly where, where that asphalt. Uh, path is down there, but, uh, he, he said, Dan Warwick was also on there at one time, um, but. He said they haven't, he doesn't even remember who appointed him to the park board, and he, he thought. The county owned that land, he didn't even know there was a ninety-nine year lease with the, um. Myers family and Marcia Omaha, Omaha, well, it's not, that was sort of. They, uh, is the executor takes care of that, and I haven't been able to get ahold of her either.
So we're in a conundrum. I recall at a previous meeting that it was voted upon to give the. Um, project two hundred and. Twenty-five, twenty-five, two hundred twenty-five thousand.
Originally, it was voted on to do four fifty.
Four fifty.
So. The council agreed to two twenty-five, and we could not do that, that vote should have never been taken because we did not advertise. That, so that vote has to be stricken from the record. But after finding out this information, I'm not sure that legally, if we could even. Give money to that, because we don't know. Where we stand with that.
Well, you gave money to Kingman, you gave money to.
Uh, that's not what I'm talking about, legally, I don't know if we can, because we need to find out.
It, it's in the county though, Kelly. It's in the county.
I understand that.
Can we give the money and put in the fine print that we're not liable for any, you know? What I'm asking. It's a community project, we've committed to it several times. You know, it's gonna happen anyway, so let's. Do our part or not, and, and stop messing around.
I guess what we need to find out is, did anybody contact the Myers family in regards to. Getting any kind of construction on it?
I think Dale did. If, if I remember right, when I got on the board room, just prior to that, Dale came in and explained everything exactly. That it was a lease, uh, from Myers family and. Uh, it's county, and he owns the property. And, uh, he explained that all, uh, so, yeah.
Look, the county doesn't.
Well, I don't know if that's how he wrote it, I, but I, I recall him going through all that. It was with the Commissioners and the Council.
Kelly, the, uh, the project was, was always there, when we did the historic review of the area, Dudley is correct. There was a path there, we saw the areas, we can pinpoint exactly where that path is. And then when the new path was designed, it was designed to mimic the old path to stay on top of it, until it gets to the bridge. And then we get into Enda, and that's when we got permit from Enda to continue that path all the way north to the second street. So the new section of the path is Enda, although the second street, the rest of it historically has always been there. And that is caught on, when, when we did some surveying down there, you could poke down with the rod, you can hit solid, and it's just six inches below muck. That's just, so. As far as the family do, are they allowed to construct there, other than what they have done, the path had already been constructed, it's there, over there for the bridge.
I think the intent was to build up over the top of.
Yeah, correct.
Above the, I see you've learned some.
No, that's, that's not possible, that was, we went through the authority, and the authority, uh, made the foundation pay and new fee. Hundred some thousand dollars to be able to construct in the flood plain. So went through the process, it was gonna be impacting wetlands. Um, and the rate was, I think it was like forty, forty-five thousand dollars per acre in new fee for the wetland impact. And the, the fees that associated with it to get that path to the earth. There is no way we can build that path above baseball elevation, because it will be twenty feet in the air.
Right.
As a side note, Kelly, they spent, I don't know how many dollars several years ago, we're doing this ramp, the state did, so you can't get above that either.
That's right. Any more discussion?
My question is, does the Myers family have to give permission than half of it?
What I read, it says no. But they own everything to put on there.
Oh, they own it?
The Myers family put a trillion dollars into it, that's theirs.
Then my next question, I know Brad mentioned about we gave money to Kingman, then, but that was our money. This is county general funds, and the state order accounts going to allow that. When we get opted. Giving money towards a project that's going to go on, go on land on, that an individual owns. So I know we've been a couple times.
That was my, yeah, it's privately on versus county owned.
There's a little strip in there that the parks board owns.
What's that?
There is a little strip in there that was needed to the parks board. I don't know if that's where the road's going or not, but there is a, a little section in there that for whatever reason, they said, ah, we're gonna give this to the parks board. And it's really small.
So I wonder if that's the path.
I don't believe so, the path runs right along the existing path.
Right.
All different, right, Robert, I did, it's right somehow, it, it crosses multiple parcels, and yet most of those parcels are owned by the Myers family. But it costs multiple parcels going, uh, going from bridge to bridge, from the ultras to the bridge.
So it sounds like we have more questions than answers. So we need to find out.
You're also messing with ready money, so, which is Brad's concern.
Yes.
That's my concern being on the regional board.
Yeah.
That.
But if it's down to that it's a, that's a legal situation with state board of accounts. We'll have to pull that, we might have to pull it from somewhere else.
I wouldn't be a legal concern, you know, state board accounts. Because we're giving county money to improve individuals' property.
Private, yeah, private property.
That's what I'm worried about. When we get opted by state board accounts. See, if it was county-owned property, it would be a lot different. But since the county doesn't own it, I don't know. Legally, state board accounts will let us spend money that's gonna improve property that the Myers family is gonna own. You follow me? I follow you, or what I said, all the, all the property on the trail was owned by somebody. It wasn't owned by.
And are they, is it still owned by somebody, or who is, who owns it now? I, I mean, there's a lot of deeds or things that go in the city.
I'm sure the, the, uh. Uh, foundation may have been. Cause the ninety thousand that was spent on the path was a grant, so it wasn't in the county, it was in the. The, uh, C S C or anger, still evolving and things, yeah.
I mean, once this is completed, the Myers family is going to deed it to the city or the county or anything that we know.
I mean, cream that says it reverts back to the trust.
Is it a possibility of rerouting that, this, to say it has to be within twenty feet of the river? Why couldn't you run that down Second Street? Make the corner around the square and just a little bit up there, look back in over in the river. Which the city already owned, that's not gonna work.
We, we looked at that, or Second Street is so high, we would have to take people's yards, that's gonna come as free land. Hmm. That was, that was one of the options we looked at, and you'd have to get easements from every property owner and tell them you're gonna take. Twenty feet into their backyard.
What about Third Street then?
Which is allowed. I mean, that's, then you're gonna be dealing with the highway park, I mean, the street farm with the city, and whether they're going.
Well, the sidewalks are already there.
So they both say that they leased it down to the park board. And that, you remember that conversation, it's been a while.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, all I know is what they found. On the, in their quarters office, am I correct, that it was a lease to the park board, which.
Right.
Who created the park board and who appoints the park board, and has, has any of that information been found?
There's nothing on the park, other than one piece of paper from ninety three. Some handwriting from nineteen ninety-three, a little very early. But yeah, I mean, there's, there's no appointee, but nothing, nothing has happened since nineteen ninety-four. When the trust got an agreement with Commissioners for. That four-year term, twenty years max, which is obviously expired.
Uh, does anyone check with the Ready Grant to see if they're gonna lose that money if the county doesn't provide it?
That's Brad and I need to get.
That's, that's my concern.
Yeah, we know.
Because that, you know, there's, construction has already been started, they've already spent over two hundred thousand.
Two hundred, two hundred and five.
Yeah. We have a bond, did you pay that Denise, or did we pay that?
The city paid money.
I think we paid that. Bond to go under the bridge over the Wabash River on one thirty-six, we had a bond for that. There's been a lot of money spent on this for this thing to go away, there's four hundred counties that have. Greenway grounds.
It's a sad situation.
It is, it's a sad situation, because.
We can say could have, would have.
Already.
Right, and we can say could have, would have, but I wish we would have known this information from. The get-go, so we would be fully informed moving forward, every, everybody.
Yeah.
Involved in it.
I think we did, in that meeting that Dale had up, Mike. I tried to go back and find it, and I haven't found it yet, but there, he explained it all, and he had some backup from, uh. Somebody from Ready or, or somebody that works on trails with the, with the Greenway piece, but man, Kelly, that was.
My god, that was.
It was early two, twenty-three or, uh, late twenty-two when you guys, when you guys, we weren't on it.
Mm-hmm.
But he explained it all. I mean, it may, I know he's getting tired of.
Of waiting.
And, well, and explaining it, because.
Right.
He, in his last meeting with us. He was very frustrated, and like, he was asking us, if, if you'd have known all this, why, why did you not? Stop it and we wouldn't continue doing all this work? And he even said, he goes, I mean, can they send us bills after we passed doing this?
Right. So we need to find out.
And not have anything better.
So we need to find out, one, state board of accounts.
My recollection though is, uh, I never remember hearing anything about it being. Land owned by Myers and that there was ninety-nine year lease. I, the only thing I ever remember hearing is that it was a county park, county owned the land.
Yeah.
And that's why they needed our permission.
They, he may have came back after you guys got on and said something about it, but he initially came, I was just on the council. So that would have been twenty twenty. Yeah, twenty twenty, and I don't remember him talking about it being the Myers, we all just assumed that was county land. And never thought anything else. Cause we were always told county park, you own that, the county owns that, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna say it was early in twenty-three, but.
Yeah.
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing about it, but I, I seem to recall it. That came up, that is, I mean, he, he went through the whole thing, but I can't find it.
So I don't wanna see the Ready Grant spending being jeopardized, but I also would, would want a. A verification from the state or the councils that we can use county money.
Is that ninety-nine year lease, what you're talking about, isn't that for the program that the Myers put all that ground in? Down there, planted the trees and that will vice for.
No, this is an actual lease that they had with the Fountain County Parks Board. Not a, a program, so to speak, it was just with the Fountain County Park Board for ninety-nine years, and that was in nineteen ninety-three, so. Do the math on that.
So Marcia, is there anyone living from that generation?
No, she had a brother Joe, and then the shares.
And John. John.
Yeah.
I have Caroline, Lars, old owner, she might be able to. Get other Marshall.
And, and will that jeopardize some Ready Two stuff? I mean, when, when, when you don't use ready money, they're giving it to you, means that gonna, this.
The next thing.
I do see gonna say. Fountain County's. Except we, we tried giving money and they won't.
I don't wanna do that, I'm gonna jeopardize some money that's.
Well, I think what we need to do as a gallery body is putting ourselves in a corner.
I know, I know, I know.
Which is where Brad.
Yes.
We say no to this money, Ready One doesn't hit a percentage, and Ready Two money doesn't go. And then you're affecting. How many counties are we here, Brad, how many millions? Pardon, what's our, how many counties, seven?
Seven.
We, we, we affect all those seven counties as well. Cause if we don't hit the threshold of money spent, we don't, maybe out more money for next projects. The one's gonna work.
And I, you know, it was, it was four hundred fifty thousand, and we compromised, and I think. That was, I mean, we're.
I, I'm on record, two, two hundred thousand dollars for a trailer, I think is ridiculous.
Yeah.
But. We're talking.
Millions on the other side.
Brad, how many millions we talking about?
Well, the Ready One or Ready Two?
Both, if they all were.
Ready, Ready One was, um, three million. Ready Two is about, uh.
Four and a half.
Eight million, well, counting the Lily money.
But then that, then that's just Fountain County.
It's about eight.
It's a little clear.
Yeah.
So it's Fountain County, doesn't have the other counties involved, that's just.
Eight point five, eight point five, ready two.
So, we'll be back, we need to find out from S B O A. What we can and cannot do, and in the meantime, we need to contact Ready. In the event that S B O says you can't take that money out of there.
Brad and I will get on with Julie.
Yeah, and find out what, what happens.
Oh, yeah, I just, I don't wanna come, you know, I wanna talk to her only.
Yeah.
Yes.
We can't take a chance on screwing this up.
And we wanna make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah.
From the beginning, so we don't have any more of this.
Right.
So. Anything else you guys wanna add?
I thought those are the money. No.
No.
Okay. No, that, that. No, that that had to be in the planning stage a long time ago and was. They failed it and asked for. The art.
He mentioned the art of money at one point, but all the art of money was spoken for at that time. So there wasn't.
Yeah, so this our county general.
Can you guys leave anything else? We need to be sure that we got an answer for it before we.
I would, I would sure sure like to see us have an answer by the.
We'll have a meeting next.
So we don't drag this on. If people don't want it on the council or the commissioners. That's the way it goes.
Okay, so we get an answer, let's say we get an answer by our next meeting, we cannot vote for it because it has to be advertised.
Yeah.
So we'll have to.
So you wanna, you wanna table this?
I wanna table the two twenty five.
这种方式?
Yes.
Already advertised though. It's already.
Oh, so we don't need to advertise again?
Advertised, yeah.
That's right, I forgot about that one.
Yeah.
After the last.
But we can table to the next meeting.
Yeah, yes.
We're gonna take.
Who's contacting the state border accounts?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I I I I get a hundred percent when he even proposed it, but I mean, if Ready's gonna give you money and they're boxing in some money and it's a big. Project from north to south. It's kinda like the way it was being sold less economic development than. Um. That I lived, um, it's. Um, I see. Unreal, but.
Mm hmm.
I don't disagree with you here.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll move forward to the additional appropriations. We have additional appropriations from the health department for liability insurance of eleven thousand dollars. From the health department for the new server for ten thousand dollars. For the sheriff's department retirement. Thirty four thousand three hundred twenty two dollars. And the sheriff's two deputy sergeant detective two thousand dollars, um, the thirty four and the two.
The retirement, what's, can I get some information?
Yes.
That was like, we knew we were gonna have to budget more. We were short, we had to do the same thing last year.
It's for the pension.
Yeah.
Our part of the pension, so.
So I thought the two thousand we were waiting for.
Yeah, right, yeah.
More information.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll table, we'll table the two thousand.
So in the the health department, that's just moving essentially because. Right, I mean, it's appropriate because we didn't appropriate enough and from what was given. But then we from the state money or whatever, right, okay.
Yeah.
So.
So.
Okay, yes.
I mean, my opinion is we're tabling the greenway and table the two thousand and go down the other three items.
We're voting on eleven thousand to ten thousand.
Yeah.
Twenty two.
Yeah, the whole from the hearing now.
I will look at the public hearing at. Ten fifty five. Any public comment, Carol?
Uh, so why does this bring this retirement to, if we had this number thirty four thousand for?
We had appropriated this year, if I'm reading this right, hundred and thirty, two thirty two, so it should be like. So make it hundred and sixty, four hundred and sixty nine thousand.
So how much more is that than we have had in the past?
So last year was a hundred and six thousand two eighty two.
A hundred and thirty, but then we had a hundred, so it's like a hundred and thirty five, yeah.
It was like one thirty five?
Yes.
Last one, one thirty five and what is it this year?
One sixty nine, one sixty nine.
One sixty nine.
And that was due to the increase in the.
Salaries.
Salaries.
Essentially, that's from. Well, we have to remember on the pension, I've brought it up a zillion times, but. How much we pay for pension is figured by an actuary. That looks at the salaries of the deputies and what retirement's coming out and. So it's always about two years behind. For the increase because they they look at the sales salaries from previous year and then the next year we pay it. So essentially this hundred and sixty nine thousand dollar bill is kind of from twenty twenty three salary, it's not. You know, so the fact that it's went up twenty four and it's going up again twenty five, it's going to continue to go up.
And if retirement is above what anybody else in the county gets, there's just for the sheriff's department. And yet they're wanting to pay and have another six days of vacation or holiday pay.
We can't change the fact that they're on pension. I mean, that is pension is decided by the state, but the sheriff's department gets a pension.
What what account is that coming out of? That mean county general or public safety?
I think it is public safety, but I have to double check.
Are we gonna have enough in there?
Yeah.
About what we say?
Is there any other public comment?
I have more questions on the health, but I've got. Whether you want that afterwards or with the public comment.
It's, it's, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, so this twenty one thousand. Is that out of the state money that's coming?
That's what I wonder too.
What what account is that coming?
That H S. No, that will be coming out of those care rooms, not tons.
So which one, like the sixty one?
No, twelve, twelve oh six.
Twelve oh six, so we didn't advertise anything? This. I know there was eighty thousand in that at one time. Um, we all normally always advertise fifteen thousand fifty one dollars every year, was that? It didn't get advertised for last year.
Off the last two years because it rolled off. We st- we stopped, we had to stop using that and we had to start using eleven sixty one.
Okay.
So.
We're not getting any more money into twelve oh six, some of that eighty, eighty thousand.
But what, what's is there, that's it.
But we talked about that in budget.
Yes.
Thinking about putting some of these things in the budget and we said, let's just use up those funds to eventually. Use them up, correct? I mean, this, yeah, I remember discussing this in budget, but that's, we would use those funds.
Yeah.
That still had a balance to do some of these things that she just wanted to need.
Okay, so twelve oh six, we're not ever gonna receive any more money, right, okay? And eleven sixty eight local health maintenance.
It's the same way.
And that's when that money's gone, it's gone.
And how much was in it?
Was thirty eight thousand.
Yes, I don't expect anything of that.
And then eleven sixty one. Are we getting?
That is the new.
That's the new account?
Yes.
So it's at forty three thousand five hundred thirty one eighty, is that what we're gonna get for a year?
Eleven sixty one is now that new H F I, I mean, a three hundred and thirty eight thousand.
Yeah, three hundred and thirty eight thousand.
So the state money. Three hundred thousand's coming from the state is going into eleven sixty one. And these two bills are gonna come out of that eleven sixty one?
No, out of twelve oh six.
Six. So. We already increased the health department budget three hundred thousand dollars this year and then we're gonna think another twenty one thousand.
But that was decided at budget, trying to take the liability insurance out of that instead of the health.
That would be the one that suggested that.
Okay, I do have that, yeah, and you did not advertise that in the budget?
No, it's too late at that point.
Okay. Then I'm okay. Okay. It's gonna come out of that eighty thousand.
At the end of January, at the end of January, it was eighty nine.
Eighty nine, twelve oh six, so. Budget kind must have been when we had eighty thousand in there, so.
Danny, you wanna tell them since we're on H F I, H F I, right?
Yes.
It's gonna be a hundred short, right?
Possibly. It's possibly, it's, um, the talking legislators aren't wanting to get as much this year, that's just what discussion is, um, we won't know until they go. If it was possible, then we'll get the reasons, which we had, you know, we can discuss after it's like.
Which I only probably did the other money anyway.
I agree. Can we do? Pick over the retirement?
Yeah, um, comes out of one hundred thirty thousand, two thirty two is coming out of county general. And then five thousand is coming out of eleven ninety three, which is the sheriff's pension trust.
That's for the service fees or the.
That's the existing, the existing one thirty, so this thirty four, this extra thirty four is coming out of county general. Then?
Yeah.
It's going to come to the general.
Okay, so the liability insurance and the new service coming out of twelve oh six. We're all in agreement on that. And then the sheriff's retirement's coming out of county general. Correct? Okay. Any other discussion or comments?
Thought that was stable. Two thousand.
Two thousand is.
The two thousand and the two hundred and twenty five thousand is gonna be tabled until our next meeting.
The pension retirement is.
So it'll be just eleven thousand, ten thousand and thirty four thousand three twenty two that we will be voting on today, the other two items will be tabled until our next meeting.
Right.
Any other comment or session? Hearing that, I'm closing the. Brad, did you want something to say?
No, no, you guys go ahead. I've got a public comment though.
Okay, well, do you wanna do that at the end?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Closing the hearing at eleven oh three. Okay. Can I get a motion on the additional appropriations for those three items? I don't have a total.
I'll make a motion for the eleven thousand, ten thousand and thirty four, three twenty two for liability for the health department. Server for the health department and retirement for the sheriff.
I'll second.
Second of my deadly. All in favor of the additional appropriations?
All right.
I say so.
Is Kelly, is this solar discussion a private meeting?
No, no, it's not. No, it isn't. We'll, we'll get there. Um, we've already assessed the high liabilities and any further discussions in regards to the high liability.
We're doing beds or? We don't need to renew the beds.
I'm sorry.
They've already renewed the beds, did we skip that part?
Yeah.
Make the room minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped right over that.
They voted on those, so we voted on those this morning, yeah.
And we don't need to appropriate any money because they have it in their budget, correct?
I think so, yes.
It's wrong, that's an idea.
So Mr. Ricketts allowed hundred people to give them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect. Do you have the numbers on? Just so I can.
Eight thousand for Ricketts, kind of a, um, project work and chimney, one way. For the deconstruction, construction.
And that was with slider, yes.
I guess.
And so. What? What'll be done?
That's gonna be gone, Ken, there's not gonna be a room over there in the middle. And this room will be open for. Okay, so, since we turned this room, but yeah, we're gonna turn it.
Now, this is all gonna be gone.
Even the wall going.
These two walls here.
Two walls, yeah. So basically this room.
Ken, the auditor's office will be between the treasurer and the auditor in that central room. And this will now be an actual meeting room, so we're opening this up to create more space for everybody. So, we thought that was a little cheaper than twenty four million dollars. Okay. I'm sorry.
But that was hard.
I I do know, what's the commissioner's?
They are ready, I mean, since we give them the O D, I think they're ready.
We need to album them all, right?
Carol?
They're hoping they can do it about three days before we have another meeting, so.
Wow.
Carol, they got a, a, a sledgehammer with your name on it. All right, moving forward, highway, um, discussion of the building, I'm doing, is there anything else you guys wanna talk about?
Well, anyway, I would say would be, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna squeeze them. I mean, if they. We get to looking at numbers and it's. They gotta have all the room, you know, they need.
Right.
So I don't think we can squeeze them and personally, I think we need to really get on it because it's a, it's a. It's a bad situation for them down there.
It is.
So.
I will agree.
I'd say as speed as it. We need to get on it.
All I can tell you is when I went down there to visit him. And I was in his office with the door just a jogger. And my eyes were burning within twenty minutes from all of the items, fumes I sent you. So. Um, I don't wanna do that to him, I would not wanna work in that environment. So, I don't expect them to. Um, anything else on that?
Kelly, just for the record, um. The contractor that I met with got the cost for the buildings, um. He's the new core steel building contractor, that's where I got most of my estimated per square foot. I also reached out to the two architect. Companies that were pretty tall, like one that had not responded. One that talked to Aaron and she reached out to me and I said, I just need you to. Um. Either revise your quote or hold your quote, because it's a CEO hold, she responded back that she's holding the quote. C A Taylor is holding their quote, so two out of three architects are holding their quotes, I believe the third one would probably hold their quotes. So whatever numbers we had last year. Um, our architectural services are still good. And then you have the new estimate from the building and the civil and the drainage and all that stuff.
Okay. Yes, Carol.
Does the figures that, uh. Like your pass include that exhaust just come in the ground?
I'm sure it probably does, yes.
Now, again, these are very general. Numbers based on square footage, once the architect completes the full design. The more bells and whistles we add, the higher the price is gonna go. The less bells and whistles we have, the lower the price is gonna go. We met with Jason, we were based with the base of what he wants, you know, he wants. An oil changing bed, he wants a washing bed, he want the stuff that he needs. Is what we talked about with the constructor. If we add any more things that we like, then the price is gonna go up, but this is the base price.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the solar discussion.
No, I'm sorry. I just have two quick things.
Okay.
If I could.
Sure.
If it's okay. Since they're all here, I have another meeting. On the. When I did build the EMS building on forty one, the ambulance building, it was a million fifty thousand. And that's what, exactly what I built it for, there were no change orders on that. Um. Over five thousand square feet of radiant floor heat. For the ambulance base too. But there was no change orders and I added some things, but didn't charge for it. So.
Million five.
Million fifty thousand. That was the price. And that, that was when they got a grant for five hundred thousand too, so I think it was an O three grant. The other thing. Since I paid for part of Stray Town Road to be paid, I would like to take you to take this into consideration, it's cause the N dots maps are incorrect. I would like to for you to consider the city of Covington taking Stray Town Road to the. I seventy four bridge.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
And we'll, we'll finish it to the bridge, the paving. Unless Jason had that in the bid for this year. But we'll do that and we'll put a center line down and like it should be, so, you know, make it better.
Okay, we'll take that under consideration, Brad, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
It's great, how many holidays in the city yet?
I don't know, twelve, thirteen.
Solar discussion. Fellas?
Well, I mean, we've got nothing to discuss, right? I don't have it in this schedule. I A C C had some advisements up to us, but none of them really got here, so, uh, so. I don't know what else to say, that's. That's where we're sitting, so.
Without some, without some photo homework, I have no further discussion on the solar.
And so. Can we ask you where you stand?
Stand as?
As far as solar, I was under the impression that we had a few. Ordances that needed tweaking, such as who's taking care of the maintenance of the road. That's certainly during construction and. That's certainly during construction and if they really turn it over, add it to the county, you know, make sure it's up to snuff and. Uh, some setback issues, which need to be reasonable, but, um. I'm getting under the impression that some of you have, uh, just no is the answer. So I'd like to hear individually, where are you standing on that?
No, it's, uh, I'm speaking for me. I'm not speaking for K W, but I never approach anything with an absolute no. Um, and I think that's where we, once again, myself, I speak for K W, K W, um, ordinances are there to protect. Um, you can talk to John Schrock, he will say, we're messing with, um, property rights of citizens, so we have to be very careful. That's. I'm not, again, that's not where I sit. We have this very fine line of what we're doing, so, um, yeah, much discussion is needed. And that's where we're at. Um, I need to be more for the A P C, he's on the, but.
Unless you've changed your mind on things, K W, your nice, in that conversation, I die, it was you who put a stop to everything regardless.
We, we can't put a stop to everything. Am I an advocate for solar? No. Am I an advocate against it? Do I like the idea of it? I do not. But to write the ordinances as such, we have to have the input of both people that are for and people that are against. That's where we're gonna start. We're gonna base the ordinance writing. That involves both parties.
So do you think that somebody lives in town? Opinions overrides the opinion of the landowner doing a private contract with someone on their own land? Cause that's what you just said. We're gonna listen to all these people that don't have a dog in the fight.
Every citizen in the county has a dog in the fight.
Not it. No, the tax money that you stand to get, you got all these problems you have financially in this country, in this county.
If you pay taxes in county.
I don't say you didn't have a say. I ask you, just go on. Override the constitutional landowner's right to do with his property if it does not have an illegal or environmental effect on people's health, air, water, all this and that.
I think if they adopt an unconstitutional ordinance, then there's recourse for that, right? I mean, if, if they have an ordinance, it's not const. It's not constitutional, somebody can.
Yeah, you're talking about somebody's, uh, ability to maintain lifestyle. Uh, Kelly probably tell you right now, farming wasn't good this year. We didn't make any money on farming. If you can put some of that ground in something that's gonna put more tax into this county than farming ever would. Why wouldn't you want to make ordinances that don't totally make it impossible to do? And I think that's what you're after. I totally agree with things that should be protected. Okay, I totally agree with that.
Property owners' rights.
But you can't make them unreasonable.
I understand that. But property owner, property owner rights, adjacent property owner and, and participating property owners have the exact same rights as far as property value aspects go. We, we have to, we have to make sure, and we're getting a little out of sorts here, but we have to make sure everybody is protected in country, everyone.
Let me explain to you. I've got hearing aids. Sometimes it's, it's funky on me. If I'm sounding like I'm yelling, I am not. I apologize for that. If, if that's how, but for me to hear things, sometimes like my wife gets on me all the time about talking too loud, but anyway. My concerns are just like, you know, having opposing views on your committees and stuff like that. I, I watched that A P C meeting. They accomplished nothing other than getting four people to resign. You know? Why are they even voting on a moratorium? That's. You guys have already done it. Why are they voting on it? And that took an hour. You know?
It was an extension of the.
It was.
They already voted on it.
No, 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 that's not correct. That's the, the A P C held.
No, no, I'm talking about commissioners and the council.
The, the council. The, the council.
We're the only ones that voted.
For the two year.
The council voted for a two-year extension on their moratorium, which is on.
On the.
On the abasements. The proposal to the A P C was to extend the moratorium, the current moratorium, permanent applications. Which is a different realm of the, of the, of the aspect. The A P C holds a public hearing. Votes on the extension for whatever part of the moratorium they want to impose. And then it comes up to the commissioners for us to make the, the, the final decision, yea or nay, on their representation of the moratorium.
They say whether we're gonna give it to the commissioners with a favorable recommendation, not favorable recommendation, or they can just say, we make no comment. Here's a, here's an ordinance.
So what you voted on before was the tax debate.
The council did. The, the commissioners have not voted on an extension of the moratorium, the current moratorium for permanent applications. We have not, we have not voted on that yet.
Okay. It's hard to hear everything on video. Miss a lot.
I agree.
So, did you or did you not vote?
No.
No, it's totally different. On a technicality to withdraw the permit to Dolphin Solar.
The A, the A P C did vote in favor of renewing a permit.
You were there, so I'm saying you.
Due to a technicality that we were advised that there was a technicality breach of contract with the solar company. That's, that's what we were led to and advised to vote on. Yes.
You're welcome. Wait, is there anything you'd like to say? Will be a bit on the spot.
No, no, we belong with Dolphin Solar. I've met some of you, uh, some of you are down with forty-two-year resident of this point of Indiana. Twenty-some-odd-year, uh, public service, various places across the state, uh, couple of hitches at engineering law firms, and certainly in the last three years in a few places against solar. Certainly, um, we did watch the plant commission meeting. Um, certainly, vested rights in Indiana is creature of law, and I'm not an attorney. Our attorney is here from Denton's, um, vested rights. Were founded in about twenty-five years ago, resulted in some different issues with, uh, the dismissal of a vacation, whatever words you want to use, uh, related to permits. Um, that is why in your ordinance, and I've written zoning ordinances, uh, administered for twenty years. Your ordinance is a very specific process to reach a completion notice. So on October twenty-fourth, our project reached that notice completion. So since that time, and before that time, this project has been responding to comments from Rogers and or the tax committee. The most recent set of comments were submitted November fourth, fifth, um, project team provided the letter. That letter has been distributed to all of you. Um, letter stated the number nineteen, uh, summarily lists the items that were in those comments, identifies one that actually finds itself in the applicable section of the ordinance to which we call the regulation. Um, on December twenty-third, we uploaded the site plan to the shared file with Roger. On the twenty-fourth, I personally put that file in the mail. Um, this column, that letter did arrive for tracking on December twenty-seventh. So all of us are speaking as that. We are in compliance with all of your, your standards. We recognize your ordinance has many, or your conversations are, there are many things that you desire. Against screening, against landscaping. This, we are always open to conversation, but I can tell you, for example, Dolphin Solar will plant nineteen thousand trees, has setbacks of three hundred from instances in the project area, to which your ordinance has a very limited landscape requirement and has a thirty-foot setback requirement. So just, just two examples of how we're exceeding those standards. So what we're here to do and have been doing is relying on your ordinance as it's written. Certainly, again, our vested rights status, certainly happy to speak to anything in specifics, but the administration of plant commission is obviously a creature of state law, how it's comprised and composed, and the actions on Thursday night, as the letter indicated that was provided, uh, weren't in line with how plant commission operates.
With what?
With how plant commission operates. The, the administration of yours anyway, I'm not the lawyer that represents the plant commission, I'm project team. Roger Azar is here as well. Um, zoning ordinance spells out very clearly how the project is managed, how a permit is processed. We are neither a seeking a building permit nor an improvement location permit. There is commercial solar energy system permit is a unique creature of your ordinance. So there's very limited areas within state code that speak to this, and certainly we are, we're in compliance with our, our vested rights as articulated late October of, of last year, but as I mean, a plant commission. It's your zoning administrator that has administrative authority over the processing of permits in this, in this particular place. So, we, we've always interfaced with plant commission, uh, county council, county commissioners. And we're here right now and answer questions, but I, I probably see, if you want more information on how a plant commission, and I serve Mr. McKeever, um, if you do have your blue book here, um, certainly might be, we're learned as members, you know, uh, on, on plant commission operation.
Uh, it's in my huge, uh, briefcase that contains plant commission stuff.
That's good.
I'm, I'm just a citizen. I'm, I'm nobody, but I was present at the, at the meeting. So I, I'll have some questions. I don't know how it works exactly, how it did work. You said that they were, if you. We understood from what was said at the meeting that Roger Azar had some questions on November eighth, therefore somewhere in there, that. Regarding some specific questions regarding.
Technicals.
Technical things, whatever they were. And that he had not received a reply from Dolphin for those technical questions. He reached out again November, or December twenty-eight?
I don't remember.
Twenty-seven?
No, that, that's, they, they were issued a, uh, conditional permit. I had talked to the commissioners and I said that there's some little bits our existing code. There are a lot of technical issues that we're still not finished because they submitted those technical issues and the required conditions. But as far as issuing a permit, they had met the requirements of our ordinance. Therefore, we issued a conditional permit. And that permit is revoked. The additional technical information that they had submitted and we're reviewing are not addressed.
So they had, they had responded?
They have not responded since.
Okay, and, and that was, that was the understanding, that was that because of not responding with the technical information.
Within a sixty-day period.
Within the sixty-day period. And then given a, uh, another notice of not responding, they would, that you requested information again sometime in like November or December.
Right.
And, and.
Well, I, I requested information in November, but I, when I issued the conditional permit, I reattached those comments, presented through the versus con at that time.
Okay, and so there, that was the understanding that they had not responded with the required technical information. And.
Not, not, not today.
I'm sorry.
As of, as of today's meeting, I have not heard back, not communicating with Sir Long.
Okay, so, all right, so not responding to the technical information that was, that you required.
Sure.
And, Kelly, did you receive the technical information that he says you, that he sent to you?
I can't, I, I don't know.
You don't know, but you do.
No, I do not.
Right.
It, end of the year was very hectic and chaotic.
True.
I honestly cannot, and I'm not avoiding the question, I do not know.
Yeah, okay, so.
If it, if I had it, it's in there in that
Yeah.
bookcase, but I would have, I would have thought I would afford it on to Roger.
Uh-huh. I thought Roger had received it, and that my understanding was that they hadn't responded. And based on what we understood from, you understood, uh, the committee understood, commission understood from Roger, was that he had not received and therefore, and in the, in within the sixty days, and now it's been it was what, what, what was it, hundred sixteen they figured out? Hundred sixteen days now since the original? And still no response. And so based on that information that they had at the time, they decided to have a recommendation to dismiss the permit.
No, I understand, yeah.
That, that, that's our, that was, that, that's the understanding that was understood at the time at the meeting.
Sure.
So if you, that is not, if none of that is correct, and you, and you've been having that responded. Then that makes a different story, but that's not, that's not the understanding this week.
No, I, it's not what I understand. And so certainly on November, on December nineteenth, the letter was provided to Roger, you can have my.
To Roger?
Yes.
But, but he hasn't, he hasn't received my.
This, I have not received the technical response, but I've received a letter that says basically that we're not required to do this, this, this by your code. And therefore, we request an issue of some permit.
Okay.
That's, you can read this letter.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so today, the matrix, the matrix of the technical comments have not been addressed.
Okay.
Um, and then I, you know, I did, the first time I've seen that hash, which is from their attorney, basically numerating the different things that do not apply. And if you compare those to our ordinance, Ron would have to agree that they do not apply. But once you present a submittal, my duty is to review that submittal. And if there's gaps in that submittal, my duty is to point out those gaps, and that's where a lot of those technical questions came from.
Right.
There were submittals that were sent to us that by code are not required, they're not wrong, but they were submitted, and now they're part of the file, and my job is to review that file and present comments back based on the submittals. So that's where we are.
So, so question then, if I. This is, again, beyond, it's beyond me, so, so I'm just asking. The, in the technical information is required for you to be able to make a determination whether or not it is, whether or not it would comply. Is that, is that correct? Is that what I understand? If, I think that's what I'm, what I hear you saying.
Well, let me, let me take clear on two different things you're asking that are combined in one.
Right.
Okay, let me clarify this, because when I talked to the commissioners about issuing the permit, it was based on, do they meet the requirements of our code? As it stands today, ordinance, as it stands today, our code is ordinance.
Right.
The answer is yes, they met the requirements of the ordinance. So you cannot deny a permit because they met the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay.
But it was sent as a conditional permit because in addition to the requirements of the ordinance, they sent us all the other stuff that you not, are not required by the ordinance, but once they're submitted, it's part of the project. There was the screening, you know, the layer, lint layer studies.
Right.
Then I would have to look at those and address them as they come. And when we had meetings, Mr. McKee, for instance, had issues with one of the trees, that's in case of tree. I cannot ignore that comment. I have to provide that comment back or study to say, you know, this or that in basic tree. So when you submit something that becomes part of the project file, it has to be addressed. I cannot look that away if it does not meet good standard engineering practices. So that's what those comments are based on. Two different things. One is additional submittals that we sent us, and we will review them, we'll need some comments on. Some of our setbacks, which are fair, you know, I asked for additional copies, so I can additionally compare their lines to setbacks, we found a couple of gaps, they can fix those, no problem. Do they meet the ordinance as it stands today to issue a permit? The answer is yes, and that's why they. And that's why they have a conditional permit. We cannot deny them a permit because they meet the requirements of our ordinance. All the other technical stuff that were submitted have gaps in them that need to be addressed. Encroaching on a legal train, having easements if you have, um, if you have, you know, putting time extension on like, or stuff like that, you know? So it's good engineering practices, it's not required by our ordinance, good engineering practices, but since they submitted it as part of the file, I have to address it. I can't ignore it. I cannot say go ahead and go on a non-participating land, put your transitional land without an easement. I can't say that because we issuing a permit is contingent on making sure we cover to the, the most practical
Right.
The interest of the, of Sound County residents. So then going through, um, this is an example, going through a, through a field that does not have an easement is not going to apply. So we request easements where non-participating properties are in. If it's a participating property, they're already signed an agreement to have that sold on. But that's where those technical comments come from. Mr. Delong, did I misspeak anywhere along that line?
No, certainly, I mean to fill in some gaps, so first and foremost, the email that contained that letter had the attachment with it, I'm happy to resend it. She actually came here this holiday, so certainly that letter identifies one singular item which had a response to, to accompany it. And on December, on December twenty third, we provided that or to some point, fourth, we mailed that response, and certainly got a little bit filed. We talk to people about that, yeah, we have tracking information on the mailing. Uh, to the courthouse, this is probably the fourth or fifth time that we packaged up and delivered and were mailed. Uh, responses as the letter indicates, there were four or five different rounds of comments here. Your ordinance has a structure, that sixty day window is in section nine point zero six, it's very early on. And you can think of an ordinance as building on its own foundation. Uh, this, the next section of that, or the section they were done speaks to the fifteen days that Roger had to initially make a conclusion, does the filing, is it substantially complete or not? So to come to the conclusion of the sixty day standard that's in section nine point oh six is applicable to every single iteration of review is an over, is, is an overreach. That sixty day window, and certainly you can consult the, that is law firm that wrote the ordinance for you. Um, or working with you on the ordinance, uh, to find out for, you know, how that comes together. But regardless, we responded on December nineteen, provided responses. Some of the questions that are asked are, go to the drainage board. Well, we can't go to the drainage board without construction plans, because your ordinance also then says, prior to construction, complete the following actions, I mean, the ordinance is very regimented and describes the first step, the second step, and the third step. We're in step one, we still have to come back and provide other information and go through the construction process, the drainage board. The drainage board lists a public, and there's multiple opportunities for additional public interaction. So the, the basis of this is that this project has its vested rights based on October twenty fourth. Vested rights, again, because the Indiana, Indiana code spelled out right that the project will enjoy.
Vested rights, so October, uh, December twenty fourth being
October twenty fourth.
October twenty fourth.
And there's a lot of they, you know, and I talk fast, I'm sorry. You ever pay, that's my recollection, yes. But I, I mean, I would, I mean but certainly as, 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 as the commissioners have stated, the actions of the Plan Commission have found their way to this body today. Certainly, we are happy to sit further and talk about those actions on, on Monday, certainly, um, potentially lead to an executive session if you were to invite us to that, I mean, because it's I mean, not to tagging the lawyer here, but it's we have a project that has vested rights. Um, and we are, as much has been relied upon based upon that. Um, I mean, like I said, we have more public process to go through. But this is, I mean, Indiana code, your zoning ordinance is very clear on, I have a process for it.
Do you, you have that, uh, binder that you were looking at, that you guys were looking at for?
I, I didn't bring, I, I didn't bring, I made PC with me.
Yeah, okay, and you, you they read it out in the in the meeting, oh, the meeting.
The Plan Commission president read something from his phone with, without the advisement of an attorney participating seated giving advice.
I'm sorry.
Seated, participating in the meeting. I, I, I will encourage an attorney who is understanding of vested rights to take a look at that. It's a newer section of code, and I can say it's twenty five years old, that sounds like it's old, it's new.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, the Plan Commission's action, per our review of it, was illegal.
Was illegal, illegal, okay.
It's basis, merits.
Okay.
I'm going to argue that point, yeah, because it was less Pamela White knew what I was talking about. Nobody listen. He's an intern.
I thought he left during that portion of the
He was told he couldn't participate.
No.
For a conflict of interest.
He left during that.
He was not to, to be, to be clear.
Okay.
To be clear. Originally, he was stated that he had a conflict of interest in, that, that was not the case, so he was allowed to stay. He chose to remove himself, go out into the hallway during that session, so he recused himself
I couldn't see that.
of that transaction. So that's, that's how that went down.
McGraw was staying, right?
McGraw sustained his vote because he is vested in the project.
He, he withdrew from the table for discussion, he stayed just to listen.
He withdrew from the table, withdrew from the voting.
But he also resolved.
Okay.
After, after the fact.
We, so we don't know, we
We don't know why, but he, he did not
Conflict of interest thing is a slippery slope.
No, it's not. Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna make my statement, I'm gonna make my statement yet again. Wayne, he probably knows what I'm gonna say. I have said from day one, since I became a council member on this Fountain County Council, that yes, I have an agreement with Dalton Solar. No, I'm currently not in the project, if you look at the map, my person is not lit up as being in the project, but I still have a contract with them. I have recused myself from any voting, any discussion in regards to Dalton Solar. Even so much so, that there was a bill that came in to get paid, did not have their name listed on it, they were in several group of bills, it was brought to my attention. I, we came back at the next meeting, we struck my vote from that particular vote to vote, to pay for those bills. And I've said it from day one, there is a conflict of interest there. And when there is a conflict of interest, you have to let the public know that you have a conflict of interest from day one. So there is no question later on that there might be an issue. I have done it. I've said it multiple times, this is probably five or number six. And I will continue to say it, because if anybody understands conflict of interest. And they should, when they're involved in a project, they look to look at that. They could be in the room, but they cannot be in the discussion, and they cannot be in the vote. So when he set, scooted his seat back, he did not participate in the discussion, he did not participate in a vote, he was present in the room, but he did none of the others. So that, to me is the way it's gonna be back.
May I finish now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I have heard that multiple times from you.
Yes.
Never questioned it. Ever. I was about to say that the slippery slope comes in when you take people that own ground, Jeff, if you own ground, which you do. You sell your ground, you, do you have the right to sell it? Anybody that comes up with the money, or is it limited? They have nothing, whites had nothing to do with the solar, they sold their ground. Don't bother. Uh, I'm not sure, like I say, there's where in comes your slipper spoke, Aaron's family owns a, an elevator. Their best interest is to not have solar, but corn and beans coming into their elevator. Is that a slippery slope, conflict of interest? That's what I say, that's
Do you have a comment on how Pamela White and Jacob McGraw with their interest, conflict of interest situations, is there, how, how would you have looked at?
Uh, Pamela White's situation is not, I didn't understand that he sold ground, the way it was described to me is that either a family member or someone who was close to had some sort of vested interest in it. I'm always going to advise these people, if you're in doubt, just recuse yourself and let's not even mess with it or run the risk. The same thing I would have told McGraw on either the right thing. I don't, I, some of that stuff, the idea that you even wanna, if there's even the slightest hint of it, and that you wanna get up there and try to but it's not worth it to me, from my perspective. I mean, that's a very conservative approach, but I wouldn't, I'd have told him both, yeah.
Well, so there's a, there's a legal opinion on how, how about the one with, um, Aaron Bruce, with him owning the
I don't own anything, just to be clear of that.
I understand that, so his family, I, the comment, that's all I'm asking. The comment?
I, I think that's a farther stretch, I mean, if he was on the APC, I wouldn't say you need to recuse yourself from this because your dad owns an elevator and
and you need to
These acres are running out of production, and it's getting like, that's
True.
I don't think that's, I can, I can do that with everybody in the room and in that community.
Just so everyone is aware. We are required by law to sign a disclosure statement for conflict of interest. The council did theirs at our very first meeting, and they were turned in and they get uploaded to the state of Indiana. The commissioners have to do the same thing, and I advise the APC to do the same thing. That way, there's no question that can be called in later and say, well, you've had a conflict of interest. Well, you fill the form out, you sign and date it, and it gets uploaded to the state, so you know, all bases are covered.
So, so my, my point of asking that was that you can't build upon a statement thrown out to maybe support, but we'll throw out the, the statement and see if it sticks, throw it against the wall and see if it sticks, well, it doesn't, doesn't it, it doesn't, so that's, that's my point, that's all I'm saying.
But yet you'll, you'll let one particular individual come up at practically every meeting that ever comes, trying to get Roger fired for conflict of interest. Now, why is that okay?
Well, I think people tend to forget that Roger has a job, he has another business that he does. And so sometimes those things do overlap into the county. Because he operates in this particular county on a project, so he is going to be getting permits and things like that. We cannot deny Roger the ability to conduct his own business.
As a contract.
So, but you know, sometimes those areas do get gray.
I, I don't
But he's, he's cognizant of it, and so
The important part is I don't vote on any. You know, everything that I propose, I propose to these bodies to look at and agree or disagree with it. They can scratch it all off, they can rewrite it, it's just, I'm contracted, he's not part, so I've been attacked multiple times about a conflict of interest with, with Mr. Radcliffe, I do a lot of design for Mr. Radcliffe, he goes phones and all that stuff. He's coming to Fountain County, there's no ordinance for subdivision from Fountain County, so there's no benefit for him, for me. I'm right, if anything, it's the opposite, because I'm helping to kind of write ordinance that would uh, that would limit his ability to do whatever he wants, today he can walk in and do whatever he wants. So that, I'm, I'm very astute of the conflict of interest issue, like I said, I worked twenty years for federal government, I know where to shut up, and I know where to back down. So it's very important that, you know, I, I, I don't want to find my trouble, that I don't want to go down where I'm I do my job, I go home and sleep at night, these are, these people are happy with me, I'll continue to do my job. Well, they're not happy with me, I'll assist with my job.
Well, and I am only putting that out there because I think every one of these people sitting around this table know what a fine job you do. Know you do everything legal, and we'd be in big trouble in this county without you. But yet, we keep hearing this one person that has a vendetta for some reason, vendetta. And I, I don't know why we even listen to that.
All right.
I represent the council on the APC, uh, the APC is in our need of, 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 of attorney. A three thousand budget probably is not going to cover, we need a little bit of discussion, you know, we uh, gone and acquired attorney for the APC. Not, not today, but just to think of all.
I have a question, it's not about solar, but what is this being passed around to sign it? Is that last one, but we didn't
We didn't hit the minutes, I think we're going to do that at the next meeting.
Sign it, but we didn't sign it until
That's a good idea, they need to think about that. Yes.
Sir. At, uh, St. Dolphins met all the requirements and ordinance. And after they submitted for a permit, are you required by law to give it to them? Just because they submitted it and made all the stuff, or can you go by what majority of the people in the county that you got to represent?
By, by law.
By, by law, I, I'm not, I'm not an attorney.
No, that's, that's the vested property rights he was talking about.
That's the, yeah.
That was a pretty short conversation, Roger called me when I was before, uh, I'm always at maybe two minutes long. He said they had everything. But he's calling me for permission essentially, and I, you know, your hands are tied. Do this.
My code.
You know?
But my question.
I said, have they done everything they need to do? He said, yes, I said, can you give them the permit? I mean, that's all, that's, that's all we can do.
That's correct. And they said, send a meeting of requirements. Are you required by law to give them the permit? Or can you just go by what your constituents want? It's very code, but
We have to follow the rules, the statute, and the rules state, they have a permit. That's it. Now, we can go right, well, we can't, but we could, we could put in the ordinance that no solar in Fountain County area. That's illegal, we can't do that, but if we did, um, it wouldn't fall on them anyways, they're already passed. Everything we're doing now is for future, they, they, they are here, so um, the argument that was made, it was was that they had met the, the sixty days that passed, and that's, that's why they're here. That's why we didn't vote on anything, because we haven't, we need more information, a lot more information.
Rock, rocks all the clarification on everything, I mean, you, you can the APC voted on what was given to them as far as information.
Well, my opinion, we don't get lead on those trying to fix the US postal system, this terrible we can stop all some mail all the time.
Yes, Mr. Shaw.
So, I'm just trying to be clear, if you can answer these questions now, it seems like it would be helpful. You've not received to your understanding, you've not received the technical questions.
Sir Shaw, if it's okay with the commissioner and the council, can I read what the permit states, so it's clear for everyone, what the requirements are?
Yes.
Is that okay? Sir, this is what the permit says, this is dear Mr. Delong. The Fountain County Zoning Administrator Office, along with other permanent department heads, you reviewed the permit application. We submitted to our office on twenty eighth of October twenty twenty four by share file email. For the requirements of section nine point zero seven of the Fountain County's zoning ordinance adopted on twenty first of October twenty nineteen and amended on nineteenth July twenty twenty first. Please accept this letter as an acknowledgement of your CS ES permit application submittal. And as a conditional highlighted approval of said application. This letter serves as a conditional CS ES permit. Prior to constructing the CS ES, the developers shall, shall schedule a kickoff meeting with the county engineer and zoning administrator office.
And zoning administrator office comma, the fire department comma, the sheriff department comma. And other applicable departments for the project to review construction plans. In addition. Prior to constructing the CS CSES, all technical comments provided to you on November eighth twenty twenty four. By the office of the Fountain County engineer and attached to this letter shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the county. And shall be presented to the Fountain County engineer for review and approval. Failure to do so will result in nullifying the CSES conditional permit.
It's.
If you have any questions, please reach out to me.
Doesn't that seem pretty much what we understood at the meeting?
But it does say, sir, it says prior to construction, this.
Correct.
Okay.
And and then.
So they haven't started construction.
Correct, and but and prior to construction. Then.
They shall satisfy all the requirements and have a kickoff meeting with all the departments to make sure. The fire department is okay, the sheriff's department is okay, the department, the everybody that contributed to the review.
And and at the end, you said that it would be. If they don't provide that information, then it would be a dismissal of the conditional permit.
Correct.
Correct.
Prior to construction, there, I don't know, and I'm not an attorney, please chime in and shut me up. I don't know if the sixty day applies here, because it says prior to construction.
Correct, like, we must spend a lot of money trying to figure that out.
The bottom line is that the APC board is going to give the commissioners a recommendation, which they have not yet. And then the commissioners will have to. Have a meeting and decide, so if that thing is going to be. Determined today, it's going to be a future date, so.
But I'm trying to figure out, I I I'm going through the process in my own mind. And saying, here's some of the information. That we need to be able to make that decision is that. You know, did did you've not received anything you that you understand, you 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 haven't received. The technical information that you needed and you said that if you needed. That you needed that technical information. Prior to construction, and if it didn't, then it would go, it would be a dismissal of the conditional permit.
Correct.
Correct.
There is. There is no doubt in my mind. That at the at the rate that these companies are spending money, that they will meet the requirements. They just have to meet them before they put shovels in the ground. Okay, they. The sixty days is a great area for me, I'm not gonna speak to that, whether they have to come back within sixty days or not.
They've been.
Permit says that prior to construction, before you put a shovel on the ground. You have to have a kickoff meeting, you have to make sure all the comments are addressed and everything is here to go for Fountain County.
And and our understanding at the time and Mr. McKee's. Response or uh. Comment. Was that if you don't have the the sixty day, which which we understood from the from the code, from the ordinance. Was that they had sixty days to respond. Otherwise, this could go on forever. You could go for ten, twenty five years. At somewhere down the road, twenty five years later, they decide to come in under the current ordinance. Was you somewhat, I'll I'll paraphrase, that was a kind of a paraphrase of what you.
Or it said firmly, it says that by ten, if they don't complete by sixty days, then. That that's their requirement, just complete all of it and and remit all the information within sixty days, not not completed, what? Uh I don't have the ordinance from me, so I just, yeah.
But but your comment was something to the effect of what we could, if they don't reply within the sixty days, then it could be. Twenty five years down the road, they decide.
Here's a problem, they have to comply with anything but what's written in the ordinance. They don't even have to comply with Roger, because he's. Uh. So English, correct. But with with anything he's asked, they don't have to comply.
But what.
And that's what's gonna happen, is they're gonna balk or something that Roger's gonna ask for. And it's not gonna get done.
But and again, that. He said in his. Uh. Letter to them was that they did not. If if they did not uh have the information, then it would be a dismissal of the of the conditional.
I'm I'm not an attorney, I'm not gonna go in there.
Yeah, I. But let me, so that's.
So we providing them with that.
Oh, so.
Grays to this.
Sure.
So so certainly, again, back to the sixty days, as in section nine point zero six, where it speaks to. The permit application will be dismissed, we're beyond the permit application. We're holding a permit. This specific topic was debated, I call it debated, by the plan commission. Well, they have a permit, how can we dismiss the permit? Because the ordinance doesn't speak to dismissal, permanently speaks to dismissal of application. So right there, you have a plan commission that's questioning what is even going on and what is being presented. So again, Mr. Razor is indicating a permit has been issued. Prior to construction, there are twenty pages of. Conditions to which Roger has to fix. Permit does say. The conditions must be satisfied. Uh you know, to the satisfaction of the county, our responses are to the satisfaction of the county. Some of those responses cannot be articulated until we go in front of the drainage board. We even have thought that we would get that letter, get from the drainage board and have an answer within sixty days. To a body that has its own public hearings, I mean, that is not how the ordinance is structured. So to debate. This, and when we say it was illegal without merit, it's because it was, the ordinance doesn't speak to this. It speaks to the sixty day process at the infancy of the application to get to vested rights. Now, some of those conditions that are in the permit. They're gonna be have to be satisfied with the county. I mean, they're, I mean, they're, it's, it's just how it's gonna work and I, and and to. Look at the vested rights statute, the vested rights statute has a three year, a seven year and a ten year rule system. And three, three years, seven years and ten years, vested rights only lasts for ten years. So to so to act as if, oh my gosh, twenty five years from now, this project's gonna be walking, no. That's not how Indiana's law works. Again, again, I'm not here as an attorney, but first, I'm not vice president law either. But my my point is. Vested rights, the project has three years from the date of that letter. To move itself forward. So we will be. On top of that response because. That window closes three years from October twenty fourth twenty twenty three. So we're. What, a year and a half forward? So you can generally think, gosh, if Dalton Solar doesn't come forward in a year and a half and wrap this stuff up. Then we can have a conversation. So I think that's your gating items you're looking for, the what, the gating items that you're focused on, is that, the a year and a half from now, I mean, you would want to see. This project making a substantial move forward in terms of construction, self fence, rip raft, whatever those might be. So.
You 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 said permit, he said conditional permit, is that something?
All the same, this, I mean, he has issued a conditional permit, yes, we will eventually look to achieve a. Full permit, exa- no conditions, everything satisfied, and the project's. Putting shovels in the ground. But we can achieve that without going to the drainage board, satisfying the other conditions that are that have been added, um and then working through that.
And and again. Clarification, if you can. You you said in your letter. That it was if they didn't supply those. Then it has to be prior to shovels and ground, corruption.
Correct.
Um. That. The technical questions had to be. Resolved.
Right.
And and addressed to you.
Right.
And you've not received them.
As of today, no, but.
Yeah, and 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 my, so my question again is that it's. And you said that if it's not. If you do not receive them. Then it would be a dismissal of the conditional permit.
Dismissal was the word you used, I recall.
I is that whatever you said, maybe that's correct.
Yes.
I thought I thought you said dismissal, maybe I'm, maybe I'm putting in what I understood in the. Ordinance that we heard on, but it, what did you say? Did you say dismissal?
Yes, I thought I was. Yes, he gave Roger. Thank you.
Okay.
Whatever was written.
Yeah.
They have a copy, Mr. Belong signed that copy, because every time you submit something, you request a signature, so they acknowledge that they got it.
Yeah.
So it's fully aware of that, and he's also fully aware that it says prior to construction.
Yes.
You know, I can tell you from working a very large business, so I'm owning my own business. When you look at my comments, all in all, I'm just trying to protect the county for them. It's an open, you know, just pick someone more than, they're not gonna, they're not gonna afford to defer it based on the comments that are provided. Well, I wouldn't think so anyways. But prior to construction. They would address those comments and if they disagreed with some of them, they'll bring them forward and then. I would have a conversation with the team that's reviewing and say they disagreed with that, this is the basis. And if they have good basis, then we strike that comment.
Okay, we're gonna move, we're gonna move forward, um. My suggestion is if you have any other further questions or comments for Roger or for Mr. Belong, maybe reach out to them and. I'll then answer them for you. Um certainly, I think it would be important for a conversation with the APC. And Dalton Solar and some attorneys to get this ironed out. Okay, hearing nothing else.
I I have.
Yes.
One other thing, uh I was up in the clerk's office and they were talking about. And I don't know who's doing it, but they were getting a quote to clean the carpets up there. And. Those carpets are at least thirty two years old. And they're so worn, I pray when they go to clean it, it's just gonna be like a blink, it's gonna shred. I mean, there's even duct tape putting carpet together in places up there and. I hope we don't spend money on cleaning the carpet.
I I have.
I I would.
Say that, yeah.
Patty said someone was in there and. Looked at everything to give him, give a quote, and I don't know who it's to, but it's not out of her budget, but. I mean, I'd rather spend that money on cleaning the carpet.
Oh, okay. Funny, you carpet us, everything's clean. Have you looked, I mean, it's really.
Oh, mine and the pork was threaded, it's in 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 our office too, but I don't get the budget to replace it this year, so I was trying to make.
Maybe we need to look at. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's down to the the strings.
Yeah, but I I think. What do you mean, that was just coming?
I feel like Cinderella, like we've been talking about it right now, like. But that would be great.
I didn't know.
Got your voice.
No, I'm extra.
Okay.
So do we need to have her? Do we need to have her get a quote on what? Carpeting would be for. Said areas. When I was thinking. I mean, it's probably, it's gonna be hefty to get a, sure, like you said.
Yeah, we have a couple of places that I would be, I didn't wait because we did like this in the jury room and. And probation, but I would love to get new carpet in the permit and the. Um staff office, but I've just kind of been waiting because there's so many other things that. I hate to put new carpet in there if we do end up changing anything and then it's just been. Spending it.
Okay.
Going with my effort, well. But also.
We do square, I mean, we've got extra squares and buy extra squares because we're gonna not have to replace.
Right, and that's exactly what we've done since I got here, is just get squares and then we can work around it, so. That would be.
I'd rather see. Focus on replacements and.
Okay.
I mean, nothing.
Okay, you want me to share that with Ben?
Yeah.
That's where you work, right?
Yeah, first is. Or is it?
Yeah. That's me, face on the floor.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Dolphins. Let's try to rub.
Mr. Bruce.
Very good.
Real quick.
I was trying to say.
Then we have a contract for one of you guys to look at, so I'm gonna pass this around.
Okay.
Um. Get in touch with me, we're having a meeting, board meeting on Thursday, um. Please get ahold of me, any of the board members, uh Jeff, especially because he's sitting on all those, and we will, uh, it is very similar to the last one. This was some numbers change, any questions, reach out, please.
Hey. I I have a question.
Yes.
Someone asked me about the building in Attica, that it's. Under weekend. And they tell me, and I I haven't verified this, but under the secretary of state, we get this registered as a single person. Not a board.
Current, yes, I think that is right.
So.
Yeah.
Does that single person get control of that building or?
No, but us, the board runs that organization and it needs to be changed, does that make sense?
Yeah, so.
This is. All of this is. Understood that it needs to have the, thank you, Dudley. Anything else, guys?
Where at, urgency?
Uh, we don't know yet.
Okay, you're.
We don't know yet, and it's actually, we're gonna need executive voting members because we're gonna discuss this, does that make sense? And new buyer, so we should have. Five and six weeks.
It's gonna be in Jason's house.
Yeah, no, 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 thank you, so, all right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking, we have, we have a different to our contract, we hear that I would like to discuss at our next council meeting. That I want to make a motion at that meeting that. I had it here, uh. That we uh see to exist, that the county receives compensation for the sale of the building. I want to discuss that, I'm gonna make a motion if we were sent that addendum. I'm just giving you a heads up right now so you can think about it. The council, if you were sent that addendum, make that suggestion during.
Any further raises? Where are you standing? I get a motion to.
Hang on, hang on. You have something to, um you don't? Well, all I wanted to do is touch on the meeting that APC had, uh we we went upstairs, had it in the uh court house, courtroom. And the reason being is to have those not uh, to be able to talk in the mic, so everybody in the back could hear, and that didn't happen. So I guess I'm saying that basically, K W, if if you have another one up there, I would encourage you to say, hey. Talk into the mic, because I got a lot of complaints. I don't know whether you did.
Yeah, and then people listen to the recording, could only hear.
Yes, so those 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 people on the committee. Need to talk into that mic and uh that's just. And then if we have a new conference room in here. And I would suggest that as stand like we have.
We're going to.
Yeah. It's kind of a circle.
Okay, and and do it, do it like, hey, do it like the main account. You guys need to get online and watch those meetings.
Yeah, not just less, but lots. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn the council meeting? Somebody's, Dudley. All in favor?
Aye.
Six oh.
I make a motion during this, please, or should I? All right.
Thank you, everyone, for being so patient.
Do you have an extra leg of contact?
Yeah. Bring it over, so.
Thank you.